Thank you, friend. All right. Good morning, colleagues. Today is August 5th. It is 10:08. I'm starting late. And I hereby call the Economic Development Technology and Tourism Committee of the Memphis City Council to order. Ms. Golden, can you please call the roll?
Councilman Spinoza. Councilman Ford. Councilwoman Walker.
Present.
Councilwoman Logan.
Present.
Councilwoman Warren.
Present.
Chair Green.
Present. Chair observes a quorum. I do want to note that item number two, the presentation on 311, has been held till August 19th. So with that, we will move that forward to the 19th in committee. But we will go forward with item number one, which is an update on the Sheraton Hotel from the administration, all council districts requested by myself and Swearingen, Jim Washington. Who from the administration is here to speak on this item? I know Ms. Gibson had a personal matter, but she said her team would be here. There's a lot of you coming up now. First, nobody wanted to come up. Now, I got more people than chairs and mics. Will you push the mic, please?
Can you hear me? Gerald Hahn, Deputy City Attorney.
There you go. You can go on down the aisle. Let me get everybody introduced first.
Andy Jones, Counsel for the City.
Maria Bartlet, Counsel for the City.
Antonio Adams, Chief Offspring Officer.
And before we begin, I do want to note a couple of things. The first is, and the reason that I did ask Mr. Adams to be here, is I have requested this to be on committee before. And with working with the administration, it was held because they needed more time. And I had it again set today and with lots of advance notice. And I got exactly zero documents, no calls, no information before today. I'm not sure if the same is true for my colleagues, but I'm seeing some heads nodded. And the reason I'm pointing this out to you is because we've had this conversation for about a year and eight months now, which is we cannot do our jobs if we do not have full information. And full information has not been given on this. And that would include some written documents, or at least an email, or a phone call from somebody at the city attorney's office or the administration, to give us a brief update so that we can prepare our questions. So I'm going to hear a brief update from those who are here today and allow questions from my colleagues. But then I am going to reset this in two weeks for committee. And in the meantime, I hope that the administration and the city's attorney's office provides us with more documentation that we can not only digest and discuss with our constituents, because I didn't put this on for me. I've had questions from my constituents since budget about how we can't afford to raise union wages or get people up to $40,000 a year, but we can afford to buy a hotel for $30 million, and have we actually even bought it? I can't answer those questions. And having you in front of me today and being here for the public is important, but it is not the be-all, end-all. And that's why I asked Mr. Adams to be here, because I hope that he works with you all between now and the next committee meeting to give us a fuller update than what you're going to present today. So with that, I'll turn it over to you all to speak whoever wants to.
Well, can I just start and say, as far as documentation, Tony Jones can speak to that. It's a very complex transaction, and he will give you an update as to where we are and the documents that are being generated. And at such time as they are ready for public consumption, you will definitely be receiving them and reviewing them. But Andy, if you could just update us as to where we are.
We are moving forward. I'm not a public speaker, so if I start mumbling, just yell at me, and I will try to do better. I'm a backroom guy who does the work. We are moving forward with the Sheraton purchase. The path has had several obstacles which we've had to deal with, but it's normal in all M&amp;A and real estate transactions. We haven't had delays so much as we've had to make sure all the parties involved are on the same page and with the same expectations, not just now, but in the future, as to how everything's going to turn out. The transaction involves eight different entities, including, not including, plus various Carlyle entities and subcontractors. So total, I think there's around 11 or 12 entities that are involved with this transaction. It's not just a purchase of real estate. It's not just a purchase of the hotel. You are purchasing an ongoing business, but you also have to plan, not just for, we've bought the hotel, but the short term of the operation by Carlyle of the hotel, the predevelopment of the hotel to get it to where everybody wants it to be, and then the transfer to a third-party tax-exempt entity that will fulfill the final prophecy of what we're doing here. That is not an easy task, because you end up with, and we have right now, about seven different documents that we're trying to merge together, not counting the tax-exempt entity documents that we're going to have in the future. And so you need all seven of those documents to work as one and to achieve it in a way that makes sense and that will not cost the city additional money. We could sign the purchase agreement, but once you sign the purchase agreement, your ability to negotiate, which includes a complex franchise agreement with Marriott, your ability to negotiate kind of goes out the window, because you have a deadline on closing at that point. And the closing is 30 days after you sign the purchase agreement. And if you don't close, you lose $1 million worth of escrow money. And so we've held off. So what's going to happen is we're going to sign the purchase agreement, and then everything else will go into place really quickly. Probably within 30 days, you'll see Carlyle take over, run the hotel, start the predevelopment, start negotiations with a third-party nonprofit to take the deal to the end.
I do want to clarify for the listening public, both people who are tuning in and our illustrious Sam Hardeman who's in the corner. When you say Carlyle, you mean the Carlyle Group, not Councilman Carlyle.
Exactly. I'm sorry. Carlyle Group. I tend to shortcut things. The Carlyle, there's about, I think it's about four or five Carlyle entities, right? At least three is not four or five. Yeah, there's several Carlyle entities.
I just wanted to make sure for those using shorthand that we are clear on that.
Yeah, it is. Entities owned by Carlyle Enterprises have principles that are the same of Carlyle Enterprises.
Thank you. Please proceed.
All right. We understand this is a cornerstone investment of the city's downtown and the convention economy, and it's directly tied to the upgrades that have already been done to the convention hotel. And due to the importance of that transaction, we're moving forward, but we're moving forward in a very thorough manner, which takes a little bit of time. With that said, I mean, we anticipate closing. We anticipate having all the documents done by the end of this month and hoping closing will be no later than September 15th. That's our hope right now.
Thank you.
Clarify. End of this month, but are you sure about September? End of August.
End of August for the documents done, and September 15th for closing.
Thank you. And that's part of the reason why I want some more materials given to us beforehand is, you know, there are a couple lawyers up here on the dais now, and we dig pretty deep on that. And I do understand exactly, maybe not exactly, but I appreciate exactly how complex this litigation is. I do not envy anyone who is working on it. But it is important for us to see those details so that we are good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars. This was $30 million, and that's more than we put towards public transportation. And so for us, it is something that we do want to be able to ask in-depth questions about. Can you remind all of us up here when the council, and maybe somebody, maybe it may have to be Chief Adams, agreed to the purchase of the Sheraton and this fuller agreement?
I believe it was October, October last fall.
So we're almost at a year. Okay. I'm going to, I want to do make note that Councilwoman White and Vice Chair Swearingen, Jim Washington have joined us. And Vice Chair, you are in the queue, so I'll let you go next.
Thank you. After closing with September 15th, what would be our next steps?
At that point, Carlyle entities would take over the operations of the hotel. So they would stay open. They would keep running the hotel, but at the same time, they would work on predevelopment plans while negotiating with a third-party nonprofit for the ultimate transfer.
So how long would it be before we would be able to start renovations and be able to move forward with the hotel? I have asked Dean Dennis and Camille to come on behalf of the Convention Center, because we're missing a lot of business with this hotel just being at a standstill. Mister, can we have Mr. Dennis come and share for just a second, please? Mr. Dennis?
Before we begin, can you answer a question?
Yeah.
We'll get you in the queue. Yeah. Okay. We're going to.
We're going to, we'll hear from him very quickly, and then I will get more questions in the queue.
Mr. Dennis.
Mr. Dennis, if you can come forward, please. Just state your name and address for the record.
After you do your name and address, if you'll just share some challenges that we've been having with revenue.
Certainly. I'm Dean Dennis. I'm the General Manager of the Renaissance Convention Center. I'm at 35, 36 Welford Drive in Bartlett. Camille, you want to?
Hi, I'm Camille Wellington, Director of Sales at the Renaissance Convention Center. My address is 2985 Overbrook Road in Memphis, Tennessee.
So we thank you for sending me the note to join today and give you some background. And as everyone knows, Vice Chair Swearingen, Jim Washington is on our commission. And we talk about this ad nauseam at our meetings. We thought better than us to tell you how important it is. We, I asked Camille to work up some client comments that we get from business that we're chasing to tell you how important the hotel is. And so would you mind passing those out?
We'll get staff to pass those around, and we can definitely review them before we come back for next committee.
We just, we want you to see, we want you to hear their words of what the issues are and how much business we have lost due to the fact that the hotel is not done. And it drives so much economic development and economic impact into the city. And so we talk about the expenses side of it. There's a revenue side that happens if we can get it done. And I was so happy to hear that September 15th is a potential closing date. Part of what we have needed is just a plan, right? Just so we can tell our clients, and they're all of our clients, from, of course, Kochik to many of our other clients that are, that have left or are considering leaving or not coming at all. And so we threw in there some numbers of just in fiscal '25, what we have lost for business. And everybody was aware of it. Mayor, Chief Adams, everybody's well aware of how important this hotel is to our city. And when you all stepped up to the plate last October and said, "Look, we know how important it is, and we're going to move forward, we're going to do something about it." And we, since that time, you know, it's just, it's lagged. I know it's very complicated. There's a lot of issues around it. But even this weekend, we had the Ducks Unlimited, you know, it's a three-year contract, had about 20,000 people come through the center over the three days. It's a huge success. And we, Camille got an email on Monday morning about how bad the hotel was and that, "What are you going to do?" So I'm going to have Camille talk through some of the things that are in that paperwork there, so she can tell you exactly. And really, this is all about, that's why I want Camille to speak. She's the one that has to deal with the sales and her sales team that gets them to the finish line, and then they decide not to come. Camille?
Camille, if you can give us a big overview so I can get to some of the other people in the queue. And like I said, we will review this, and we're going to come back in two weeks.
Not a problem. So in the information that was given, you'll see in the fiscal year '25, it was a total of 6.4 million economic impact that we could have gained with, and these were clients that strictly had issues with the renovations. And some of that documentation is listed on the emails from the clients. Some of these groups are those clients that are on those emails. And you'll see on the next couple of slides are just simple emails that we're getting from clients on why they're not picking us. Some of these groups were ready to go to contract and why they decided not to go to contract. And most of those were because of either the disrepair of the Sheraton or not knowing when a renovation would happen. One group in particular that I do want to mention is, like Dean was saying, us just having a plan or knowing when it'll happen. KLA is one of those groups. KLA is Campgrounds of America, and they stay in Campgrounds and did not even want to stay at the Sheraton. So, and their thing, and you'll see one email where they were saying why they wouldn't stay, then another email a couple of months later saying, "Do you have any updates?" They're ready to sign a contract if we can just give them what the plan is, when it'll happen, so that we can go ahead and get them signed in here in Memphis. But also on one of the, the next to the last slide is talking about just previous clients that we've already had that won't come back, that we can't even bid. So this comes to, we're not even getting a seat at the table now, because they're not even giving us RFPs anymore. So these are groups that we can't even bid on because they need to know, they're refusing to come back until we get renovations. And then just the last one is where we are now versus where we used to be. So it shows what we currently have on the books and then versus where we were in fiscal year '13. That was when the Convention Center needed a renovation. And if you see where it's boldered at, year one, on the books, on, what we have on the books is 2,855 sleeping rooms, where we used to have, one year out, 35,000. So you can see where that deficit is. So what that means is, for me and my team, is that we currently have to sell so hard in the year for the year to make up those deficits, which is kind of hard to do, because most groups are booking a year, two, three, four. So we never want to be behind, because then, all of a sudden, when the year gets here, then we don't have anything on the books.
Thank you. And to those points, Chief Adams, I think maybe when we come back in two weeks, if we could not just, hopefully, we'll have an update from legal about where they stand. And I understand that that's been very complex and taxing, but hopefully we'll show that we're even closer to finishing that. But then a timeline around when renovations will start. And that's not something I know that the city attorney's office can answer for us, but that's where it sounds like the pressure is coming from the Convention Center. Thank you for that update.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Vice Chair, do you have more questions right now, or should I move down the queue?
No, I'm just excited that they were able to come and really share the sense of urgency for us to move forward.
Thank you so much for inviting them. I appreciate that.
May I add something before we go?
Yes.
I just want to add that it is a very complex transaction. It does take a while. But just for a point of reference for the members, when we did the transfer of the stadium to the school, even after you guys approved everything, it still took a year for us to complete that transaction, just for you to compare and see, you know, what we're working with here.
Yeah. Now, we understand that it's complex, but that's why we're trying to bring some transparency to that, because, again, we're hearing from our constituents, we're hearing from business communities, that this is having a detrimental impact. And so while we appreciate that we want to be thorough, we also want to be efficient, especially around this project. Councilwoman Logan, you're next in the queue.
Good morning. Thank you all for the presentation. Thank you, councilmembers, for bringing it forward. And to your point, we do understand that it does take a long, take a while. And when you all came to talk, we asked you to come to talk about why it was taking so long to sign that document as well. So we were unaware that it hadn't been, and I was, and requested that you come for that same reason. So though it takes a while, we, like she said, communication, transparency, openness, and I think helps, not that you're trying to hide anything, but just making that effort to be intentional about coming on a periodic, you know, on a periodic manner to present what's going on, so everybody knows. But my question was, since October to now, how, what is the state of the hotel now, the status of the hotel, rather? And how much have we spent? And whether it's in operations or upkeep or whatever from then? Are the delays standard, or are there any challenges that you're looking at that has caused a delay?
The hotel is still currently owned by the owner. The hotel is still owned by the owner. I want to call him the previous owner, but you know, I mean, it's the owner of the hotel. It has not transferred. And so all expenses of the hotel are still with them. The city has not incurred one dime to opt to manage or operate the hotel itself.
I just wanted to confirm that.
Well, can we, can we get Chief Person up to speak to the, or somebody to speak to the finance piece?
Andre Walker, Deputy CFO. To my knowledge, we haven't spent any of the bond proceeds on the project. We reserve, we set aside $24.5 million for the acquisition, as well as the study to do how much of the costs of renovating. We haven't touched any of that yet.
But have we made any bond payments?
Yes. We pay annually about $3.8 million in debt service on the bonds.
So that is a real cost. And, yeah.
So 3.8 million is actual.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. That's what I was wanting to know. Because people, the reason why I asked the question is, some constituents think that we are actually paying the bills on the property now and, you know, because of what happened in October. So I did want to put that out there in the public, but in actuality, we're paying the debt service on, so that is $4 million. Okay. And the delays, are they standard? Or are there any challenges that we need to be aware of?
I'm going to call them standard, but, you know, every deal is unique, every deal is special. Personalities involved are all special. I mean, so, but there's nothing, there's nothing that I would call out of the ordinary. It's just when you're trying to do three steps at once kind of deal. I mean, you know, normally, you know, if you had a perfect world, you would sign a purchase agreement, and then you would negotiate all the other agreements, and then you would close and go anyway. Because of how complex this is, and, you know, you've got to think about, normally cities don't own hotels. And even for a brief moment, and so you're going to have the city of Memphis owning a hotel, and Marriott's franchise agreement has a lot of identifications in there and things the city can't be a party to. So the Carlyle Group has to sign the franchise agreement on a hotel it doesn't own. And so we have to make all of that kind of flow together. So I would, I'm going to call it normal, but it's a normal, not, you know.
Were those things known prior to?
Prior to?
October?
Yeah.
When we voted.
I mean, we knew we had to get through those steps, yes.
Okay. So they were anticipated and included in the process?
How we were going to do those, you know, maybe not, you know, fully known, because if you knew, you know, you would just do one draft of a document. And so we had multiple drafts of all documents going back and forth.
And this helps for me, for future projects, questions and information that I'm going to be requiring beforehand, because if you were aware, and it's still a problem, or if you were not aware, and it's a problem, and we're a year out, then those are things that have to be taken into consideration, because the flow chart that we saw, or the, you know, the graphic said, it just had a lot, you know, everything's in line, it had all of the way it was going to be, who's going to do what and when, and it seemed as though everything had been worked out, and it was, you know, soon as we get that done, we're ready to go.
There's, in every deal, not just this deal, every deal you do in life, there's a difference between the 10,000-foot view and the words on a document.
Absolutely.
And the 10,000-foot view, I would say, hasn't changed since October. I mean, but the one-foot view, you know, has changed a lot since October.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I go back to you.
Thank you. Councilwoman White?
Thank you. Councilwoman Logan pretty much kind of touched on what I wanted to touch on. When do we start paying back? When do we start paying back on the bond?
We paid our first debt service payment April 1 of this year. The next would be October 1. The $3.8 million is paid, half of it is paid in April, half of it is paid in October. So our next debt service payment would be three, would be October 1, around $1.9 million.
I don't want to be repetitive, but I will say that I'm very concerned that when this deal was originally brought to us, that it was expected to have a, it was brought initially because it was this urgency as to some type of auction coming up, or short sale, or some type of issue. And then we would be purchasing it, I think, January, and we're in the beginning of August. And I still, I understand that deals are complex. I've been a part of it, and I know Councilwoman Green was saying, you know, litigation's not even in litigation, it's kind of working out contracts. And I understand that can be tough, but I still haven't really, and I don't know if maybe it's things that maybe we need to have an attorney-client on, and maybe can't be said out loud. I still just kind of don't have an understanding of what's occurred since October to now in August. So we are satisfactory for me, anyway.
I mean, there was some, there was a belief that we had to have it purchased by the end of the year. Starwood is the owner of the hotel. They actually, they're an entity that owns the hotel and owns other hotels. They wanted it off their books by December 31st, and so they were pushing hard to get it done, and they were threatening to take it to auction if we didn't get it done. They realized that this deal couldn't get done by then, like come December. Like even they realized, and they backed off that, and they were willing to let it stay on their books. Because you have to understand, for Starwood, that hotel is losing money every month over there, and it's not part of their, it's not part of their portfolio that they want to keep. And so they also understand that the city is by far the best purchaser of that hotel. And so they do not want to take it to auction. They would rather the city buy it, and they're willing to let us get it right, instead of forcing us to enter into a bad deal, just to get it done.
I understand. That's still, I still don't understand what's happened from October to August. And maybe in the upcoming two weeks, I know it's coming back again, maybe you all can huddle and see if we need to do something, attorney-client, or, I still need a better explanation as to what's happened since October to now, and how we missed the timeline by so much. Like, I understand it may be, oh, it took 30 days longer, 60 days longer. We're headed up to a year longer than what was expressed to us in terms of this deal being, at least moving and going. And at this point, we're not paying actual expenses for the hotel, but we're paying actual money, $3.8 million, on money that's sitting, that we're not even using, and we're paying it back already. And so I really would like to know what's occurred and what we're doing to make sure that this doesn't happen again. And I agree with Councilwoman Logan, this is a really, it's an experience to know what questions to ask in the future, so that we can proceed with caution in terms of just having money that we've now borrowed and are paying back on for a property we don't even own.
Yeah. I couldn't agree with both of you more. And, you know, I also know that there's other things we could have done with that $30 million in the meantime. There is, or, you know, we could have invested it and made interest on it. So, yes, it's all very frustrating. I'm going to go to Councilwoman Walker, and then I know, Councilwoman Logan, you have one more question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you all for coming and for your presentation and information thus far. So I had a question about customer complaints. Should that wait until two weeks? Chairman Green, should that wait for two weeks, questions dealing with customer service?
I think if we can have a representative, maybe the administration, you know, who we should be pointing those complaints to, that we could bring them back in two weeks.
Okay. Okay, that's fine. So I'll move on to my other question. To you, sir, or anyone who can respond, you said something about after roughly September 15th, the Carlyle Corporation will take over, and then at some point, it goes to the third-party nonprofit. So when the Carlyle Corporation takes over, what does that look like? What exactly is them taking over? What does that look like? What will they be doing in this process?
Their duties during this process are twofold. One is to operate the hotel, maintain it, try to do some repairs, but basically, status quo as far as how it looks. I mean, that's how it operates. Davidson Management Group currently operates. Davidson Management Group currently operates the hotel on behalf of Starwood. And Davidson will stay in place and the employees will work there. Those kind of things stay. But instead of Starwood being in charge, the Carlyle Management Group steps in. The other part of their duties is the pre-development phase, where they hire architects, hire designers, and start that part of the, how, how the hotel is gonna look, get the drawings done, that type of phase. And once they get that complete, then we transfer to the third-party with those plans. And the third-party starts construction.
Okay, thank you. I yield the floor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Logan?
Thank you, Chair. One other question. I do know the process. You all went over that and we bought into that and felt that was the best thing to do at that time. As we've seen along the way in other projects, in this one, sometimes, you know, there are things that come up and we need a contingency plan. Are we looking at a contingency plan? Do we have Plan B? And if so, is, you know, someone responsible for that? That's one question. And then I know you, based on what you just said, at some point, Mr. Burrows and, I forgot her name. There's another partner, they were involved in it or supposed to manage it. But I just heard you say that the Davidson Group is gonna manage. Is that something totally different?
It's totally different.
Okay.
Davidson Group is what I would call boots on the ground. I mean, they actually run, like the employees of the hotel are actually employees of Davidson Group. There's a hotel, there's a management agreement in which the Carlyle Group would manage Davidson essentially. And make sure, they're, they're ultimately responsible essentially to make sure that Davidson Group does everything they're supposed to do to keep the hotel running, the budget stays the way the budget's supposed to be, those type items. As to a contingency plan?
Well, before you go, was there, has that been the plan all along? For the Davidson Group to manage it?
You mean boots-on-the-ground type? Yes, I mean, it's always been the plan.
Okay, all right. So the Burrows Group, are they still involved?
I can't speak to who's involved with the Carlyle Group. I'm, I'll be honest, I'm not, I haven't dove into who the actual members of all the Carlyle entities are.
I know they came to counsel.
Yeah.
And were a part of the process. And I wanted to know if they were still involved in the process. Anyone up here can answer the question.
I'll have to confirm that with you, Councilwoman, to make sure. But as to my knowledge, none of the parties have left the group itself, so. But I will confirm that as well.
All right, thank you. Now for the contingency plan. Are we looking for other buyers? Or, or is there a, in case something, you know, happens with that plan? Or what is the contingency plan?
You mean other buyers for their tail? If the city can't buy it?
Or, yes, or if something falls through at any point, is there a contingency plan being set?
I think at this point, because of where we are on everything, that I don't see a contingency plan because I'm not sure we need one. I mean, it's, we, we are, we are, and it sounds dumb. We're closer than we've ever been, but we are very close to the finish line at this point. We really need to finalize. It's really word choices in a few places. And honestly, at this point, we're going through cross-reference in all documents so they don't conflict. We, we've laid them all out and gone and read them. Now it's just a matter of, you know, where one says, you know, you have 30 days. Another one says you have 45 days for the same thing. Making them say the exact same thing is what we're at. And so we are extremely close on this agreement and this document at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Cooper Sutton has joined us. And I, we're gonna let you ask your question. I do want you to know, since you just joined us, we are bringing this back in two weeks as well. So, good. I know, and we appreciate you looking like Olivia Pope showing up today, all right? All right, go ahead.
Nice, Councilwoman Chair this morning. Thank you. Good morning. And thank you, Chairwoman, I think Swerdrin Washington, for bringing this before us. And as I've listened on my way in, there have been a lot of concerns and questions with our constituents asking about it, especially when it is involving the taxpayers' dollars. But I heard you just say that there, there are some choice words that are in place. Did I just hear you just say that?
I mean, as far as between the documents?
Uh huh.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, some choice words. And my colleague Rhonda, colleague, Councilwoman Logan, asks for a contingent, a contingent plan if this doesn't fall through. But what I'm hearing and what I'm listening to and to your responses and to those that have been at the table, I think this is more legal that we are probably dealing with than anything, from what I'm hearing. It's more legal and there are some backdoor stuff that's going on that they can't come to an agreement with. I think that's what I'm hearing.
I mean, we're, we're at an agreement as to how the documents will operate.
Yeah, but what I'm listening to you all, and to be very transparent, the word that we use so loosely, and to be honest to the people, from what I'm hearing and what I've heard, listening to you all, there is some stuff that's going on in the backdoor with probably developers and attorneys, because you said word choices and things that are going on, that possibly could be the holdup. Am I correct on that? Am I hearing correct?
It's just, yeah, it's standard negotiation. I wouldn't call, I wouldn't say there's anything trying to go through a backdoor. It's just a matter of
Of course you wouldn't.
No, trust me, I'm, I am as far from a politician as you ever. I don't, I, I, I'm not, I'm not good at this. So I'm telling you.
You're doing just fine, sir.
You're good, I was listening to you.
This is normal, I'm, I'm, over 25 years, almost 25 years of practice, this is normal negotiation. It's just back and forth, making sure everything is operating the way we all want it to be. Because what you don't want is to sign a bunch of documents and then a year from now, everybody's shocked by a result. And that's what we're all trying to avoid is you have, and it's, and, and some of it, you know, you're having to forecast what's going to happen. I mean, and how you're gonna get on the road, how it's gonna operate.
What's it gonna look like five years from now?
Which is, which is difficult to do.
Exactly.
It's very difficult, but no, we're not, it's not, it's not to the point. I've been in deals where you think somebody's trying to hide something or we're all trying, you know, trying to get something over. I don't think that's the case here. This is more of a very complex deal in which we won't make sure everything's right because we respect that this is the city, this is a municipal taxpayers involved. This is not, I mean, you know, and, and not only that, the importance of that hotel to the convention center, you wouldn't have spent, this council wouldn't have spent the millions of dollars on the convention center, you know, knowing that you're just gonna let a hotel, you know, dissolve over there essentially. And so we're trying to make sure that we have, the hotel now can support the convention center. And not, you know, just turn into something that, that nobody wants and it goes away. So we're, I'm sorry. So that's, that's our goal. I mean, we're, and I think that's, and I think that's everybody's goal involved with the transaction, is to make sure we do it right and we do right by the city.
Well, I, I hope that's the, the spirit that we're all in. And I think that that's the spirit that we all should be in moving forward, especially this council here. Because we want to make sure that we do good business and do good transactions and make sure that the taxpayers' dollars are not just wasted. And then a couple of years, we look back down the road and it's oops.
I don't, I don't want my name on that.
Well, thank you, I appreciate you. But I was listening to you with your transparency and your honesty. And my spirit did pick up. You were really trying to do a good job and make a good deal. But we want to make sure the citizens are blowing us up, as they have already said.
I am a Memphis resident, I pay those taxes too, so I understand.
So, yeah, we pay both taxes, Shelby and city.
I do too, I live, that's where I live, I live in Central Gardens, I understand.
So thank you so much, I appreciate you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I appreciate that. And I, I think hopefully what the administration has gathered today is a sense of concern and urgency from this council. I, I think we were all hoping that we would be here at a ribbon-cutting on some renovations at this point this year. And to hear that we haven't even signed the paperwork is beyond troubling. So again, as much as we can talk between now and the next committee meeting, as much information as you are legally able to provide us. But the other groups, like, you know, when will they start knocking down walls and painting and things like that? Let's have those conversations between now and then. And then let's bring people back in two weeks to discuss this a little further. Because it's, it's a large chunk of our budget. And as it's been pointed out, we're already paying for it. Whether we're renovating the hotel or not, Walter will tell me that's a real expense on the, on the, on the sheet. So we need to, we need to come back and talk about it just a little bit more. Okay, yes, Vice Chair?
Yes, and if we can just make sure that we're communicating so that the team can say, you know, that the paperwork will be signed at September 15th and they're gonna start renovation and so and so, so and so. That will make a big difference in trying to sign contracts for future years. So as much as open communications we can have, it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, all right. And seeing no further.
Can we establish quarterly updates?
Absolutely. I'm happy to have quarterly updates. And, you know, like I said, I did try to bring this earlier, but I was asked by the administration, because it is a sensitive legal matter, to hold. And so I defer to them, but from here on out, we'll just sunshine this. All right. We need monthly updates. All right, with that, I am way over time and I've already put us behind, sorry. And we'll call this, this committee adjourned.
Councilwoman Spinosa?
Here.
Councilwoman Ford? Councilwoman Green? Councilwoman Walker? Councilwoman Logan? Councilwoman White? Councilwoman Cooper Sutton? And Chair Warren?
Also present. Colleagues, we have one item on our agenda today. It's a resolution to allocate and appropriate funds of $415,000 from the Accelerated Memphis Project number PKA 1001, Construction Management Contract Architecture and Engineering for Chandler Park Playground Project. This is in District 4, Super District 8, sponsored by administration. Could I please have a motion? Moved by Logan, seconded by Ford. Mr. Bolton, you have the floor. Name and address for the record, and please proceed.
Justice Bolden, excuse me, Justice Bolden, 5660 Glade View Drive, Memphis, Tennessee, 38120. So we're here today just to discuss the allocation appropriation funds of $415,000 towards the Accelerate Memphis Project. In particular, these funds are to allow us to complete much of the project management associated with the Accelerate Memphis. So as you all are aware, many of these projects should have wrapped up previously in 2023. But nonetheless, we're in a situation now where we're working to complete much of the work that's being done across our park system. We've experienced some cost escalation and, and material delays. But nonetheless, the moving of these funds is going to allow us to, to finish up what we have.
Would you like to tell us a little bit about what you're gonna be doing at Chandler Park? And then we can bet on it?
So Chandler Park in particular is a, is a playground that we were working on. And as of today, we've purchased many of the playground structures associated with the project as well as the pavilion. However, the $415,000 that was allocated towards the project is roughly about half of what we need in order to be able to complete it. And so we're talking about the purchase of the pour-in-place rubber surfacing, the insulation of the pavilion, which we do have, as well as some upgrades, tree planting and leveling of the grounds. And so as of now, we don't necessarily have the funds available right now to complete this project. However, we do plan on completing it, and so.
So these funds will complete the project? It'll help you. So you'll, you'll get partway, you're gonna come back and ask for more funds later?
No, I mean, we won't, we will not ask for any additional funding. It's a part of the Accelerate project, but it will help us move forward with completing the program and project management portion of the project. And it will not, we will not sacrifice any of the projects that we have out there.
All right, thank you. Let the record show that we have our Vice Chair, Councilwoman Jen Swerdrin-Washington, and our Chair, Councilwoman Ford here at Fort Canale. And we have one question from Councilwoman White.
Thank you, Chairman Dr. Warren. So this is a contract, it's a management agreement, correct? A project management agreement?
Yes.
What's the project cost?
So Deputy Director Allen, did you have any comments on that?
Marsha Allen, Deputy Director Memphis Parks, 2599 Avery. So the entire project cost would be about $1.3 million. So we've purchased the, the equipment for the playground, the pavilion. So the installation and things like that is what we were short on.
Okay, so this is a project that's already ongoing?
Yes, ma'am, it is a part of our Accelerate Memphis. It was one of the projects that was in there. But the cost escalation has allowed us not to be able to do it.
So I guess I'm trying to understand the need for a, like the $400,000 contract mid-project on a $1.3 million contract. I guess I'm not following.
So are you paying, is this what you're paying the people to build it?
So let me get full context. So again, this is a part of the total, this, this is a part of the total Accelerate project. With respect to this particular project, it's a little over a million dollars. But this includes program project management, including, also including construction as well. It's reallocating from the total portion to cover this particular project. So it's construction and it's project management. So it's not solely project management.
So the $400,000 is construction and project management? Because here it says, "Construction Management Project $415,000."
Yes.
So it includes construction as well?
Yeah, so the, the $415,000 includes both construction as well as project management. That is correct.
And the total project is $1.3 million? So is the 415 million, I mean, 415,000 a part of the $1.3 million or in addition to the $1.3 million?
So the $415,000 would be a part of it?
So the actual... Let me just think, because maybe I'm not, maybe.
No, you're, you're, keep going, you're, you're getting... Maybe I can intervene. Does, I guess the question we're asking is, this in addition to the $1.3, we're needing $415,000 extra? And you're bringing it in? Or is this just approving an allocation of something we've already budgeted for and you need us to allocate funds?
Can you repeat your question again?
The question is, are we merely allocating funds that have been appropriated and you wanted the allocation? Or are we adding additional funds to a $1.3 million project because of cost overruns?
Now, we're allocating the funds, we're not adding any additional funds.
So these are, you're just asking for an allocation of budgeted funds to go to this project? Is that correct?
That, that's correct, it's not.
That's a really easy way to say it, okay? Does that answer your question, Councilwoman?
It did not. I understand that the funds are allocated, the accelerate funds are there. I'm trying to understand the cost, a couple of things. I'm trying to understand, is $1.3 million the total cost for the project at Chandler Park Playground?
I think.
Yes, that's a portion of the entire Accelerate Memphis project. Yes.
Well, no, 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 I'm not. I'm specifically talking about this project for Chandler Park Playground. That's what this says this is for. This says this is a construction management contract for Chandler Park Playground's project. What's the cost for specifically Chandler Park Playground's project?
I think they had said the total cost was 1.3 million. Is that correct, Chief?
Is that for, so that's what I'm asking. So we keep, so hold on, Dr. Warren, let me, because I wanted, I thought I was confused, but I'm not. My question is, I understand the 1.3 million. Is that the total cost overall or is that what's left? Like, there's been some portions of Accelerate that have gone to the Chandler Park project? And then there's now some more to do and it's gonna cost 1.3 million? Or is this the total cost for this playground project?
Some has already been done. So we've purchased the pieces. So it is going to cost us more money to complete the project because none of the installation has happened.
Got it. So you all have already spent accelerate funds in order to buy the equipment?
The equipment. So the playground, the pavilion, all of that has been done and purchased. Yes, ma'am.
So the $1.3 million that we're talking about right now is to do what specifically?
It is to install the pavilion, the playground, the pour-in-place surfacing, some regrading there at the park, and then to add some other improvements, tree plantings, things like that. So it will improve the entire park.
Okay, good. Now, to the 400, so that's 1.3 million dollars. The $415,000 contract, construction management contract, you said that is a part of the 1.5 million cost that you're estimating and not in addition to the 1.5 million dollar cost? I mean, 1.3 million dollar cost. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. So now, my question goes back to my original question. In terms of, and I don't know specifically what the standard is for construction management contract, but that seems to, that's almost half of what you're saying it's gonna cost to complete it. It seems as if you've already started the project, you already have the equipment for the project. You just gave me the plan as to where the project is gonna be placed. So I'm still not following the $415,000 construction management contract. So what is it that is included specifically in this $415,000 construction management contract? Being that it's almost half of the 1.3 million dollars and you all seem to already have a plan and have started on it?
Yeah, so this 415,000 doesn't just go to this particular project, but also to other projects that are within the Accelerate scope.
Well, on here it says, the Council of City Memphis did include, from my understanding, the way I'm reading it, and maybe I'm not reading it properly, it seems to be specific to Chandler Park Playground's project.
Yes, because that's where the funds that are identified that are going to go towards the overall project management of Accelerate.
I'll tell you, I don't ever want to be the person to hold up something, especially not going towards a park. I want us to have parks, I want us to have community centers, I want us to have all the things. But I, right now, I am not comfortable. I don't understand what this construction management contract is for. It doesn't make sense to me that it's $415,000 for a project that has already been started, seems to have a plan, and then it's more, almost half of the remaining part that's left. I don't understand what the $415,000 is for.
Councilmembers, can, can we provide to you before the close of today, a cost breakdown as to where the, because I definitely get your point and I understand the point of confusion with respect to the reallocation of the dollars. So let us get that to you all, get that breakdown, and then you'll have more information to move forward this afternoon.
And also, what would also be helpful for me, as I went over this and kind of looked through it, it would also be helpful to just know where we are with the Accelerate Memphis funds in general. And I know that's not a specific you all thing. That's why I asked for Chief Person to come back in. What projects have been completed? How much have we spent on those? How much money have we spent out in terms of our paying on these bonds? I would just like a wrap-up sheet on this whole project. Yeah, thank you.
All right, we'll bring that back to you.
Councilwoman Green.
Yeah, I, I tried really hard to follow. I mean, I have all your same questions and I tried really hard to follow all the answers. And I got more lost the more y'all answered. So my request, Chair, is this not be same-night minutes? I understand it's important, again, as Councilwoman White said, that we are having playgrounds and parks and, but I need us to get it right, not get it done right now. And so we just sat in my committee and had some contracts that we agreed to because they were urgent and there was a big need. And now we're here a year later and it's not the answers we want to hear. So I think a cost breakdown of this project, of the Chandler Park, I'm not even clear if it's going to one park or if it's going to a bunch of parks at this point. Literally, just like a straight-out budget. And I would say that for, you know, again, other requests that come to us like this from the administration, not just from parks. It's very helpful for us to see, is that going to playground equipment? Is it going to a management agreement? Is it going to trees? Like, just having that bit of detail is very helpful to us. But my request, Chair, is that, you know, again, we just not do same-night minutes tonight because I think there's too many questions.
Yeah, I don't think it's, at least on the revised agenda, it's not over the same-night minutes. Okay, so I think that what we'll do is, let's go ahead, and Logan, she's out of the queue. Let's go ahead and take a, we'll move this down, I guess, without a recommendation to.
And we'll provide.
And you provide the recommendation and we can vote on this at that time.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? If not, we are adjourned.
President McGowan.
Doug McGowan, 220 South Main, President Memphis, like gas and water. Mr. Chair, today we're before you with a request to allocate and approve the allocation of $5.7 million of MLGW budgeted funds, bringing us to $267,000 for the year, $267 million for the year. We have 14 items today. The first is a $192,000 contract for GDS Associates. They are going to help us with the exact placement of our battery storage system. We put an RFP out for batteries and solar. We got responses back for the batteries and solar. We know what we'd like to do with the batteries and GDS is gonna help us. We have never done this before, so they're gonna help us with the strategic placement and putting that in the best location for our grid to support resiliency. So we appreciate your support on that. The next is professional engineering services for water engineering. As you know, we have a lot of work happening in water. We're doing filter upgrades at five of our pumping stations. And this HDR will help us with Palmer, Shein, and Lichterman Pumping Stations. They will also help us with the construction management of those projects and other projects that come up in the water division during the course of the year. This is actually a two-year contract. Next is professional engineering services with water engineering, again, in the amount of $500,000. This is with Barge Design Solutions. Barge will be helping us with reservoir high-service pump designs at both McCord, Lichterman, and Shein. This increases the reliability of supply. These high-service pumps are what generate the pressure that push the water out into the system that we deliver to everybody's homes. Again, this is a two-year contract. Next is Veritas Network Backup Renewal. You see these recurring annual contracts for software renewals. This is with Thomason Consultants. This backs up our data in our IT environment. It protects us, the virtual machines and our actual machines that we have on our desktops, specifically for our GIS and our customer information service system. Next is Enterprise Performance Management Cloud Service. This is $238,000. This is a three-year contract with Mythix Incorporated. This allows us to continue using Oracle. Oracle is the main system that we use, our software system. It allows us to do performance management and finance division, accounting for all of our financials, our audits, our reconciliations, and also helps us with just general performance management of the organization. The next contract is for standard 30-foot octagonal concrete poles in the amount of $247,000 with ATG supply. This buys us about 101 30-foot octagonal concrete poles. You'll see those in and around the, all of our service territories. This is for light poles. This is not utility poles. We put streetlights on top of these concrete octagonal poles. Next is standard concrete post tops. This is to purchase 91 standard concrete post tops. Now, a post top is not the goose neck light, it's the decorative light that has the light sitting on top of the pole. And you'll see this in and around the parkways in various neighborhoods that have historic-looking post tops. This buys 91 of those. As you know, we have a need to replace these frequently because people run them down with regularity. You'll see them being knocked down regularly. The next is the amount of $441,000 for a four-wheel-drive backhoe. We have 116 backhoes in our fleet. We have budgeted to replace three of those in 2025. And this procures those backhoes and completes our procurement in 2025. Next year and beyond, we'll be buying about seven of these per year to keep our fleet current out of the 116 that we have. The next is three-quarter-ton trucks with service bodies. There's a picture here so you can see what that looks like. We have approximately 689 pickups in our fleet. We budgeted to replace 68 of those in 2025. And we are purchasing six of these from Lonny Cobb Ford, and that is a portion of that planned procurement. You see, I bring trucks probably every other meeting, and we have these on contract from various dealerships. We get them on the state contract. And so when they're available, we purchase them. The next is low-cap Ford stake trucks in the amount of $236,000. We will purchase three of these this year. We have budgeted to replace 11 in 2025, and this is part of that procurement. Again, these three are available, so we're buying them. We have about 230 of these trucks in our inventory. Next is a 65-foot telescopic boom lift in the amount of $297,000. We'll be buying two of these boom lifts. We have nine of these in our fleet and we budgeted to replace two in 2025. And this completes the procurement in 2025 that we had planned. Next is preventative maintenance for our uninterruptible power supply. We have uninterrupted power supply for most of our IT functions and our computers. And this is a service contract that extends it for three years from 2025 through 2028 in the amount of $129,000. We've had it in place since 2023. The next contract is for water, gas, booster, and vacant lots ground maintenance. This is with Rotolo Consultants. This is the second of four annual renewals. Again, this is vegetation management, keeping the grass mowed, keeping the weeds down, and keeping our water facilities looking good in the neighborhoods in which they are located. The next is revenue and meter services support in the amount of $589,000. This is a one-year contract with Bridgewater Consulting Group. As you know, we have done significant work to bring the delayed and held bills that we had several years down. I'm pleased to report they're at the lowest level we've ever had in our history. Bridgewater Consultants is going to help us solidify best practices and help us bring them into an automated fashion. Today, we've been doing this, the brute force method, with lots of people working seven days a week to get us to this point. And they're gonna help us with workforce optimization, making sure that we have the appropriate performance measures in place and that we can repeat this going forward. So we're pleased to be where we are today, but this will help us solidify this going forward. That is 14 items for your consideration, and I appreciate the opportunity to present to you subject-to-air questions. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, President McGowan. We've got Dr. Warren in the queue.
Thank you.
We also got Councilwoman Walker. Dr. Warren, go for it.
Looking at your replacement plans for various equipment.
Yes, sir.
I was trying to figure out, just doing simple math, are you on a 20-year cycle for some things and a 10-year cycle for other things? And how do you determine what your replacement cycle is? Because we don't have that in the city well done. And it looks like y'all at least have a plan. I just was wondering what that was.
We do, and I'd be happy to share it with you again. I know you all get tons of emails. I've shared this with Councilman Spinoza because he asked. I'll share it with all of you if you're interested. We have a fleet replacement plan. We have a gentleman, Brad Chandler, who is outstanding. He manages our fleet. It depends on the piece of equipment, quite frankly, Councilman. If it's a mower, you know, it might be seven years. If it's a heavy piece of equipment like a concrete mixer, it might be a 20-year asset. But you'll see, he has a plan flowed out over about the next 10 years for our replacement plan. You'll see the quantity that we have in inventory, the average age that we have. And it's not just age, it's also based on condition. So when Brad and his team look at that, they'll say, it's 10 years, does it need to be replaced? Well, it's a low-hour unit, probably can get a couple more years. So they'll look at that. It's not just when we hit 10 years, we replace it. But by piece of equipment, you'll see average age and when we plan to replace it. But I'm happy to share that with you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Warren. And then we've got Councilwoman White in the queue as well. Before we go to Vice Chair Walker, yeah, Councilwoman Warren, please do get with him on that. And if you don't mind, maybe President McGowan, send that to all the council members just because it's really a good example and I don't want to bore everybody. I know we're a little bit behind, but I think it's important. It's a great example of how you, of how they manage a fleet. And Lord knows, we talk about that here too, and I think about police.
I think headed toward that here.
Yes. And so it's really a good thing to look at their plan and the way they age it out. I mean, it's a process, and if you do it right, it's a really beautiful thing. Not to mention you have updated equipment and everybody's able to get the job done. So thank you all for allowing me to speak in my own committee. Why am I saying that? Councilwoman, Vice Chair Walker, you got it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Councilman Warren and Councilman Spinoza for your questions and comments surrounding the fleet. I did have one question. Can we go back to slide number five?
Number five, yes, ma'am. Here we go, yes, ma'am.
So is this with respect to the RFP that I asked you about earlier?
Yes, ma'am. So MLGW last, I think it was this spring, we put out an RFP for solar and batteries. Their, GDS is specialists in helping us to integrate these, and they're gonna give us advice. Now, we had an idea where we want to put the batteries in the system to help support it. GDS is gonna help us with the final design. GDS is going to help us with the final design because, again, it's the first time we'll be integrating batteries into our system at the utility scale, and so they're going to refine those placements. We anticipate those being done over the next 12 months as we get the batteries in and installed. So it's going to be important to have the expert advice on hand to help us get that done.
Okay, so as you or we move forward with this, is this an item that we would receive periodic updates on?
Absolutely. I'll give you periodic updates. Again, we have not awarded the RFP yet to anyone. We're still negotiating with the vendors to make sure we have the final, but as soon as we get that, I'll come back and give you a report on where we stand, what the results of the RFP were, and what we do for next steps moving forward. It's an exciting thing. I appreciate you being there as we announce that. It's important to all of us that we add some battery storage to our system, and we've heard from our constituents, they're interested in having solar in our system, so that's why we put that out as well. So it's exciting for us, and it's important that we keep you apprised of that, and we're happy to do that.
Okay, thank you, and hello, Ms. Madden. Good to see you. Mr. Chair, you have the floor.
Thank you. All right, we've got Councilwoman White.
Thank you. Just from that additional explanation, my question was on slide five. You just answered it.
Yes, ma'am.
And then slide 18, the revenue and meter services support. This one I didn't follow as much.
Okay. I will get here. So revenue and meter services. This began right as you all were taking office. As you know, we had a delayed and held bill problem. We had meters that weren't, or registers that weren't registering, and as a result, we had a backup of bills that weren't being sent out. We internally brought on some resources internally to get all of those bills out, and as I said, we're down to the lowest point we've ever been in our history. Last month, 99.85% of customers got their bill on time, and that's the lowest we've ever been. We have done that, again, I call it the brute force method, just by enlisting people from within the organization and trying to get those out the door. Bridgewater has done billing and metering services for a number of utilities across the country who had this kind of experience, and what they are putting in place is a series of systems and processes so that we never go back to that again. So they're going to provide us advice and oversight and help us figure out the mix of automation versus manual processes. What we had before was almost, we had automated processes, but we didn't have a manual backup if the automation didn't work. So they're going to provide that seamless transition between automated and manual so that if something does occur in the future, we have a process that we don't get behind on. So they're experts in doing this with a number of other utilities, so we're asking them to help us now that we've gotten through the crisis. Let's solidify this so we have a great baseline of policies and processes going forward. Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And then we've got Vice Chair Swerendong Washington.
Are you all storing any batteries at the Army Depot location?
No, ma'am. We don't, we do not have any batteries currently that we will, as a product of the RFP, they will ship those batteries to us, and we'll probably ship them to the site where we'll install them, but we do not store any batteries at the Army Depot.
Oh, okay. Have you seen?
I have not seen batteries at the Army Depot.
I've had so many constituents ask me about those.
I have not. I don't, I do not know what that is, to be quite honest.
All right. Thank you. All right.
Council members, good. All right, thank you, President McGowan. Meeting adjourned.
Thanks, sir.
Issues had led to us in bulk waste collection in particular, getting, getting behind in, in collections. Area C, which runs, I will move forward in my presentation, area C, which is this area right here, north to Southern Avenue, south to I two forty, between the Mississippi River and Kirby Parkway. That area has seen the highest num- highest call volume from three one one. We are addressing that with, with not only adding equipment, but also adding people. We've been working compulsory overtime, or not compulsory, voluntary overtime, six days a week, Monday through Friday, plus Saturdays, to combat this issue. So I'll come, come back. So some of these slides you've seen before. The previous slide was just the waste stream, what we, what we collect, garbage recycle, yard waste and bulk waste outside the card. Garbage and recycle are collected once per week. Bulk waste is scheduled twice per month on a bulk waste collection schedule. Here's our org chart for operations. We have, we have four area managers that serve, that, that are responsible for overseeing the four areas of the city serviced by the, by the, the city crews. There's a fifth area, area E, that's serviced by the contractor. Each one of the city service areas has three zone collection supervisors. As a breakdown for that, each zone has about six, has six garbage routes, about five hundred homes each, three recycle routes, approximately a thousand home, homes each, and three bulk waste routes, which are about a thousand homes each, and those are serviced daily. So area A, I know I talk in these areas and they've been kind of nebulous. So just wanted to break that, kind of give you a box to, so you can get a visual of it. Area A is north to the city limits, south to Jackson Avenue, between the Mississippi River and Witten Road. Council districts one, seven, eight, and nine. And those are partials. So area B runs north to Jackson Avenue, south to Southern, west to the Mississippi River, east to Shelby Farms.
Once trash is supposed to be picked up once a week?
Yes, ma'am. The, the cart collection is once per week, recycle collection once per week on your collection day.
So what, what's wrong if, if your trash hasn't been picked up in three weeks?
If, if your trash hadn't been picked up in three weeks, there's obviously a collection issue. We, we want you to call three one one. It could be a variety of things. It could be, could be crews, you know, it could be our, our mistake, our crew issue. It could be, there's something in the cart that's, that's not allowed, cart's overloaded, cart has liquid in it. There's some things that, that, that are not, that are prohibited from being collected or just outright hazardous, dangerous to be, to collect, either to the employee or to the equipment. And so we, and then sometimes we do have instances where the customer is, is filling the cart after us. You know, we dump the cart and they call three one one, say they missed us. And what they're doing is they've got a lot of trash and they're reloading the cart after we come by. And that's not, I won't say that's the rule, but it's not uncommon for that to happen.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Logan?
Thank you, Chair. One thing that I think would be helpful, and we talked about this several times, we got, we have to do a better job or figure out a way to communicate with the customers. If they've put something in the cart that is not allowed, is there a sticker that we can put on the cart? Or do, how do you notify the customer that you have stuff in it? Even if they don't, like, I know we say that they should know, or do we put it in, in the utility bill? A notice of what they can put in there on, and keep that in there every month? Where we talked about some QR codes, we've talked about, so we need to put a sticker on there for that. If they are coming, like if they call and say they didn't get picked up, and you said, yeah, we picked you up yesterday, and then it's full today. And if you feel like they're putting stuff in there, is there some type of notification that you can say, hey, you need to get you a dumpster? Or you need to take this to the convenience center or something like that? But there is no reason why we should not be able to communicate to individual customers. And I know there have been some challenges in the past while we couldn't do that. But we have to fix those because people don't, shouldn't have to call us. And it's fine for them to do that, but they shouldn't have to. They should immediately receive an email that day, so we weren't able to pick you up for whatever reason, and we're going to get you on this such a day.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, you're absolutely correct. We need to do, do a better job in communicating. We do have a ta- a tagging system where if stuff, basically for bulk waste outside the card, yellow tags are used for prohibited items, oversized tree debris, contractor debris, those items. And then on the, for the cart collection, we do have an orange tag system that is for overloaded carts. Somebody fills, fills the cart with concrete. We're not going to dump that in the back of a garbage truck and tear up the garbage truck with concrete.
So you put yellow, you put orange stickers on there?
They're, they're long tags.
Send us that information on, on that type of tagging and what's prohibited. So some type of graphic, whoever's in communications or whatever, send us something that we can share with our constituents if there are things that they're doing, you know, that we can let them know that. But I think this is just basic trash, not just basic household garbage, weekly garbage that's being missed on, in all of our districts, and people are, are concerned. So what is the main, again, I'm asking as well, what is the primary issue that you're finding? I know what it could possibly be, but based on your stats, the data, what is the issue?
The main two issues are-
For in-cart, not out-of-cart right now?
For in-cart misses, the main two issues are, number one, it would, it would likely be a, a mechanical issue with the truck, truck breaks down mid-route, and, and we can't get back, you know, to complete that route during the day. And then number two, it'd be customer behavior.
So when you can't, the number one, when you can't, when there's the equipment issue, do we notify them, but that it's going to be three weeks before you can fix that truck?
It's not three-
Based on what she said?
Yeah, no, it, it should not be three weeks. They, the, the crew should have access to a ta- to, to a tablet that, that knows where they left off, so that even if we can't come back that day, the next day, they know where they, where they left off and they resume service.
Okay, because at some point it begins to be a leadership challenge. You know, when they, not just you, but us, as well as, you know, administration. So if you all could come back with how you're going to improve communications, I want to know that, how we're going to notify individuals when there's an issue that day, that week, or they can't get back, because I think that is a part of the problem as well as us not servicing them.
Certainly, yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilwoman. One last question from Councilwoman Swearingen, Washington.
I just wanted you to make note that the highest areas of concern that I receive are Bethel Grove, Parkway Village, Fox Metals, and over there in the Hamilton High School, Hamilton, the old Hamilton Elementary area. Also, what are we doing to expand the service centers, like the Collins Yard? If we could have more sites that people could take their things, maybe they would be less inclined to just dump anywhere.
Yes, ma'am. And so what I have on the screen right now are the, the two current convenience centers that we have operating. The three oh four Collins Street facility is, is available. Thirty-two oh seven Ferrisview Boulevard is the second one that we've stood up, near Lamar and Airways. The two landfills, anybody with a MLGW bill showing they pay a city's solid waste fee can utilize the two landfills at no charge. One is in the city limits, fifty-four ninety-four Malone Road. The other one is just outside the city limits, off US fifty-one at seventy-one eleven Old Millington Road. And then we have the three recycle drop-off locations as well. Downtown, the Cordova, one at the Agri Center, and also Hickory Hill Community Center.
What are those days and times for the convenience centers?
The convenience centers are Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Are we working to extend those days?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. And then the landfills are open Monday through Saturday.
I would like to, when you come back to, for you to share your schedule that you have for your supervisors to spot check the locations.
Okay, our, certainly, but our supervisors work seven to three, Monday through, well, Saturday if we're working voluntary overtime.
No, I would just like for you to share your schedule of how they spot check-
Okay, okay.
The trucks-
How we, how we do that.
To make sure, you know. Over here has been picked up, that's clear, so-and-so, so-and-so, this is clear. How are you going behind them? Because something isn't right. You would, you wouldn't believe the communication that I receive, the text messages, Facebook, emails.
No, ma'am, I, I understand, and I-
Stated funerals.
And I do think that, there, to Councilwoman's point about communication, we need to do a better job of what, what is a missed trash, because I get a lot of complaints forwarded to the division for missed trash, and it's a littered sidewalk, you know, and that's not the service we provide. We empty carts, we do bulk waste, fee-paying customers, residential collection. You know, there is, you know, right-of-way maintenance and other things, other, other divisions that we do definitely support. But I think people throw the word trash around, and it's not necessarily a garbage cart-related issue or a bulk waste-related issue.
And I'm sure that may be true, but when I see, when I receive communications, often they're videos of the entire streets and pictures of the trash. It's not just something small, it, it's a great concern.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
So we, we're going to have to fix this.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We have Councilwoman Cooper Sutton, and then we're going to try to get to our other items. Councilwoman, you are up.
Thank you, Dr. Warren. These are the locations, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
For waste drop-off and recycle drop-off.
Yes, ma'am.
Those locations are nowhere near, those locations are too far for the people that we serve to even try to get out there to do that. Most of it, this, this is what I'm seeing, and this is just around, general. This is a poverty-stricken city, and I think no one has really taken that in consideration. You come up here, the University of Memphis, not you, Director, has data, metrics. The chamber came and talked about that. These locations are not accessible for the people that we serve. They're not going out there. Because guess what? I ain't going out there neither, if I can be honest. And I have reliable transportation. So if we can get, and, and I hear what council, what, what Chairwoman is saying, I think every district gets the same, it's just overwhelming. It's overwhelming. And I know you all are working hard, and I know you are, and we appreciate it. But however, whatever systems that were in place back then is not working for now. And it's okay that it isn't working, but you got to be more innovative. And where we are now, and what's happening now, and where we live, Memphis is a poverty-stricken city. Poor people, poor folk, black folk. Every community, their Chairwoman, those are black people that live there. And you know what? They don't want, they, they don't want to live like that, and they shouldn't have to live like that. I got a friend, I got a call from Chickasaw Gardens, just, just out of the blue, sent me a nice little email. And the person said, I'm so sorry that the black people in your community have to deal with the way the trash is, because our trash get picked up on Thursdays. Am I right? I want you to come back and you tell me that. She said, and we don't have that problem. She said, and I'm just trying to figure out, how can we balance this? And how can I work with you, Councilwoman, and the other council members to make sure that everyone around this city is treated fairly and equally? That's from Chickasaw Gardens. So I want to know what makes them different on Thursday and make our people different, where they got to suffer for a whole, the whole entire street, the whole entire street. So I decided to get up on Thursday morning because they told me when their trash day was. She told me the trash day is on Thursdays, you can verify that if I'm right or wrong. Am I right?
Yes, ma'am.
I thought I was. So I decided to get up on a Thursday morning and just to ride over there, just to see. They don't leave no juice. They sweep their streets. I literally had tears in my eyes, because why are you all constantly mistreating the black community in this city? What have we done? What have the people done? They're poor. I sat there and I watched, because that person called me and said they're out here. I got in my car, smooth, I'm talking about like clockwork. Then when I get home to my garbage on a Wednesday, I still got trash left in my garbage. I had to take my garbage can, put it in my front yard, take gloves and literally go in it and just clean it, because it's not being emptied. So it's a problem. And it ain't about liking me right now, it ain't about voting for me, it ain't about getting no money, it's about doing this city right and doing the people right all around this city. One neighborhood and one community should not be done better than the other community. And this is for everyone that's sitting in here. You ought to be tired of Memphis looking the way it's looking. You ought to be sick of it, and then you lie. The root cause, Chairwoman Swearingen, Washington, you have no idea. And I'm sick of it. And I got a call from Chickasaw Garden, told me to come sit out there on a Thursday morning and watch the way they roll, and the, watch the quality of service that they are rendered when their garbage is being picked up, and how clean it is. Am I right about it? I'm right about it. Now, I expect that, we expect that. These are taxpayers, and we expect it. I don't know when it's enough, it's enough money for anybody in this city. Everybody sues this city, the people that say they love this city. We go on and on and on and on and on. We must do better. And I, this is not an ask, I'm demanding. I yield the floor.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and thank you for that presentation. As we move forward, I think we need to remember that we actually voted not to put in another recycle place somewhere off of Frasier Boulevard recently, when we had people come here. So part of the reason we don't have these places is what we did. Okay, right here, number two now is the resolution to approve cost-sharing agreement between City of Memphis and the Memphis Shelby County Airport Authority for Raleigh Millington Forest Main Sewer Improvements, District Four, Super District Gate. It was moved by Councilwoman Cooper Sutton and seconded by Councilman Ford, oh, and Councilwoman Swearingen, Washington, and seconded by Logan. And we have administration here to present this. Go right ahead, name, address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Scott Morgan, Director of Public Works. So this is a cost-share agreement with the Charles Baker Airport, which is off of Fight Road in Shelby County. The city currently has existing sanitary sewer service that services this airport. We're doing some sewer improvements, and they requested an alternate location for their sewer service connection, which we agreed to as long as they paid the cost difference in that alternate service location. So this is the cost-sharing agreement that memorializes that for approval.
Any questions about the body? Sometimes I act like y'all like me. All right, is already removed, second, all those in favor? Any opposed? Spina, sure, die, say it, thank you. Next item, item number three, a resolution approving sales of nine twenty-four Thomas Street, Memphis, Tennessee, to Young Actors Guild, why they're here and nonprofit, for a nominal fee, further described as parcel number zero two seven zero zero five zero zero five one, District Seven, Super District Eight, sponsored by the administration, is requested same time minutes. Moved by the very enthusiastic Councilwoman from District Four, and seconded by, I have no idea who seconded that thing. Would move and seconded by Swearingen Osborne, seconded by Councilwoman Cooper Sutton, with that administration. Mr. Osborne, you talking to us today?
Yes, sir, Carlton Osborne, City of Memphis, one twenty-five North Main. This is a resolution, a resolution for the, the donation of one, nine twenty-four Thomas Street, Old Fire Station number six, to the Young Actors Guild, a non-app, nonprofit organization. This organization is basically, has a mission to bring creativity back to the community by providing safe spaces for youth through integrated arts programs while fostering, fostering, empowering thought, education, outreach, and social uplift. So they have already proven themselves-
We know, we know.
They've already proven themselves in Fire Station number twenty-two, and so we're going to do this again with Fire Station number six, and we're asking for your approval in the same time minute.
Okay, expansion? I would go, but I don't want Councilwoman Swearingen, Washington to act up. So we're going to let Councilwoman Swearingen, Washington speak her piece.
I just wanted to commend the city in allowing Young Actors Guild to have this property. It's District Seven, and many schools, I looked up the schools over there, it would be Gordon Elementary, Kip, Memphis Collegiate, Bonanza's High, Mays Valentine Elementary, Humes Preparatory, and Memphis Scholars Caldwell-Guthrie. All of those schools would benefit from this program, and you all did a tremendous job at your location in Orange Mall. It is beautiful, it is first class. So I'm just excited to see what you all are going to do in providing orf music and performance and all of that good stuff that you all do. You all are just doing a tremendous program. It is my pleasure to support this and to support you, and thank you for what you're doing for our children in Memphis. You all make, you all are the dynamic duo. So thank you for your hard work, and I definitely support this program, support Young Actors Guild, and I ask all of my colleagues to do so as well. Thank you, I yield the floor.
She might hurt you if you don't leave this.
That's right.
Want to keep you, all your limbs intact. All right, it's properly moved and seconded, all those in favor? Chair's eyes will, this item is approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you all so much.
Congratulations. Item number five, presentation on street paving, selection and methodology. All council districts requested by Councilwoman Cooper Sutton, Director Morgan. Councilwoman Cooper Sutton, this is your item, you brought it. So talk to us.
Thank you.
I'd have to commission a building in the building. There we go.
Thank you, Director Morgan. I did get your layout and the process of what it looks like. But however, the constituents are very concerned, and we know that what our road conditions looks like in this city. And so what we need is an explanation on what determines what street, what determines how long, what determines what area gets street pavement, and what does this look like? So I hope the constituents who have been blowing me up are actually watching you with this presentation, so they can understand the process and the methodology of how this works and how communities are determined on how these streets are paved. So you have the floor, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Councilwoman. Scott Morgan, Director of Public Works, one twenty-five North Main. So as Councilwoman stated, this is a kind of an overview of the street paving process for City of Memphis, and this initial slide is just a few of the recent pictures of street paving crews. So as a reminder, well, first, racial prioritizing the worst, the worst of the worst conditions. And as a reminder, we have six thousand seven hundred lane miles here in the City of Memphis, and a lane mile is one mile of street per lane. So if you have a, you know, a two-lane street for a mile, that's two lane miles. So for FY twenty-six, this council approved sixty million dollars in CIP funding. We look at things that are, that are assessed on the streets, or cracks, potholes, deteriorated asphalt, any, any condition in the asphalt surface or the asset that is not a smooth surface, essentially. And we also look at roads that have higher, you know, that are vital to the city as far as road usage, impacts of businesses, citizens, high traffic counts. We use high traffic counts from Division of Engineering, or traffic counts from Division of Engineering. And through that, we have two levels of inspection. So one is engineers go out and inspect onsite conditions through three one one calls and citizen complaints. And then the next is we hired an outside expert in twenty twenty-three called RAS, and it's essentially an independent specialist that travels the entire road network within the City of Memphis using cameras and, you know, technology to video and photograph the entire street segment throughout the entire city. And they process that data and provide a score. So the next slide, so RAS is roadway asset services. This is the vendor we used in twenty twenty-three. That's an example of the vehicle that was used in City of Memphis. So I mean, think about a, we've all seen the Google Street View Car, you know, around, and essentially this is what it is. So they use laser measurement systems, they have three sixty cameras. They sort of, they look at the street for profile and roughness, they measure the crack thicknesses, things like that. So all that data is captured for every road segment within the city. That data is processed, and then it generates a pavement condition index or a score for, yes, sir.
Do those trucks and cameras, do they look at the drains as well?
No, ma'am.
Can they? Do they have the capability of doing that?
I'd have to check. I don't, I don't know. I mean, they're focused on pavement condition. Now, this was, never, keep in mind, this was done in twenty twenty-three. It's recommended we do this about every five years to get a holistic look at the city to help us make decisions.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman Logan?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation, Scott. I'm sorry. Do you have any update on the app? Or the place that you all had, used to have a place on the website where we could go and see our very street, when it's going to be paved? Like all the streets in the city, where, where you were on them, how many you had paved, and when our particular street was going to be paved? And I've accessed several times and haven't been able to get an update. So hopefully you can let us know today where we are with that app.
Yes, ma'am. So the web application will be up in about one to two months. So we're working with roadway asset services to put in all the current paving schedules as well as, it'll, it also shows previous years where we've been for each year, and that'll be on the website within one to two months.
So it went down, and you're going to bring it back in two months?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then citizens can go on the website themselves and see exactly when their street or their area will be paved.
Yes, ma'am. Once it's up, I will make sure to notify council.
If in fact there is any delay at all whatsoever, please notify us as soon as you find out, so we can update the constituents, because that was a great tool that we had, and I think that may help. And include on that site where you have that, where the maps are, a number, they can call our email address, that they can get direct information when they're looking at, if they have any questions or concerns, or if their street shows up as having been paved, but yet it's not, or something like that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You had a question, Councilwoman Walker? Cooper Sutton, you still here?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, yeah. Chairwoman Swearingen, Washington asked your question about, did they do sweeping or drainage? If you can just insert a little piece about the AI Google, you know, we talked about that when I was in Florida, and I saw that, that we had some equipment that actually did that.
Yes.
And so could you just let her, well, she stepped out. But if you can do it offline, but let her know about the Google AI system that we do have in place here, that we are now trying to upgrade, is looking at sewages, am I correct? I mean, the drainage and, and the, the potholes. So we, they need to know that that is in the works, and there was a contract that was contracted out of Nashville, when I did my research with Google.
Yes, ma'am.
And we are in the process of having upgraded in that area.
That's current, I, I provided that update in April, and I'll get with Vice Chairwoman on that. Yes, ma'am, thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Walker, and then we're going to let the director finish his presentation. He says he's ready.
Okay, I got one more slide. So- So, so going back, so this is, you know, the vehicle, and we did this two thousand and twenty-three. And so, we'll be due back up around two thousand and twenty-eight. But this company provided a street index score, a pavement condition index score of every segment within the city of Memphis. And this is an example of what several look like. You got the kind of color coding, you know, green to, green is good, yellow, red, things like that. And you see each score for each segment. And then, so what that does is, so while there may be, you know, a piece of roadway ten feet long that's in very poor condition, if you take the entire segment and rate it over the, that footage with the, you know, all the measurements that were collected, it provides an overall aggregate score for that segment that includes the, you know, ten-foot area that I referenced. So, these are just, you know, a few examples of the web app that we have to look at to help prioritize paving. And, you know, summary, it provides a, you know, a clear prioritized decision-making tool for us to help list the streets that we have that need paving the most. Of course, our, you know, we have capacity of the budget. We have capacity of the contracting community, meaning that, you know, you could give us sixty million dollars, but there might not be enough contractors as well as city crews to pave sixty million dollars worth of streets in a year. So, there's a, there's a breakpoint at, you know, at some dollar level. And we also, you know, do a lot of coordination with TDOT and, you know, state funding for resurfacing state routes as well as interstate routes and constantly meet with them to advocate for funding. And as y'all can see, there's been a lot of interstate paving on two forty recently. So, that's the update. Thank you.
Any other inquiries about the body? Councilwoman?
Yes, thank you for coming. Thank you for your presentation. So, I sent you an email recently about what causes potholes, and you did reply. It's not long. Would you like for me to share this with the public in the moment?
Sure.
Okay. Essentially, storm water finds its way into defects, cracks, imperfections, et cetera, on the asphalt surface. Water gets into those imperfections and is soaked in by the road bed. Over time, the road bed becomes saturated, and then vehicular traffic pushes that part of the road down, and the asphalt eventually starts to break apart. In addition, during inclement weather, snow and ice, when temperatures drop below freezing, the water expands. Then, when it thalls, there is a void left under the asphalt surface. Vehicular traffic, over time, depresses that void, and the asphalt eventually starts to break apart. So, thank you for your response. And it was also accompanied by a link that goes under TDOT slash maintenance slash potholes if anybody wants to look that up. So, thank you again for that. And then, also, I sent another email to you, President McGowan, Director Berlin, in regard to the condition of the Elvis Presley corridor, more specifically between Winchester and Craft, where the, the issues are not limited to that portion. But that's where the next phase two of the repaving is supposed to take place. And I, in addition to my comments, and Elvis Week starts this Friday, by the way, and I meant to wear my shirt today. But people coming year after year, and they're talking about, what is this street gonna get fixed? And I'll just stick a pin in that. But also, in the email, I requested that somebody can, somebody ride with me eastbound, excuse me, can someone ride with me north and eastbound on Elvis Presley between Winchester and Craft? Because, you know, the, the rideshare drivers, they have the thing on the dashboard for the phone. If you put something on your, on your dashboard and you ride either way, the, the view is, is gonna be moving. It's not gonna, it's gonna be moving because the vehicle is moving because of how uneven the street is. And when MLGW finished, there was an expectation that this repavement would start right after that. And it has not. And it's just only so many ways that I can answer these same questions over and over. And so, I'll pause right there. But I wanna take the ride. Who wanna take the ride with me? Can we take this ride? Thank you. Go ahead.
With the Division of Engineering. So, we definitely welcome and do that ride with you. To talk about the Elvis Presley Phase Two project as a whole, that is an active project site. It's an active work zone. We did acknowledge the fact that Elvis Week is coming up this week. We have instructed not only our partners in MLGW, but also our contractors to acknowledge that and, and try to pause the work currently in that area in support of Elvis Week. So, that's been directed to all contractors out in the field. The project as a whole is an eighteen-month to twenty-four-month project. It's not simply a resurfacing project per se. It's actually more than that. It's a, it's a true roadway widening project. Well, what does that mean? That means that curb work is being redone. All of the above-ground infrastructure are intended to go underground, similar to the Phase One of that project of Elvis Presley between Winchester and Brooks, where a lot of the poles and a lot of the power lines are now being done underground. The challenge that we are seeing out there, out in the field, is we have the plans. We know what our plan is. But oftentimes, those are different than what the actual field conditions are. We try to guess as best as we can the locations of the infrastructure. But oftentimes, what is shown on the plans is not necessarily what we find out in the field. And so, that's some of the challenges that we are hitting. And not only us, as our contractors, but MLGW as well, as well as any of the other dry utility companies, AT&amp;T, Verizon, so what have you. And so, you know, those are challenges that we just tackle out in the field. And we find that. We try to keep, maintain our schedule to the best of our ability. But we do experience that out in the field. So, just, we ask that the, the citizens be patient as, as the project moves forward. It will get better. But there is gonna be a period of time where it's gonna be a challenge because it's an active work zone.
So, I can articulate that. And I've been sharing things along those lines, not the specific part about the curbs. And, but, but that is in need of repair, especially in front of Whitehaven Plaza West Side because I talked to you all about that once upon a time. But when I get that pushback, and no comment is required, but when I get the pushback, well, would it be like this if it was Walnut Grove Road? Would it be like this if it was on Popular? So, there is a perception, as my colleague Cooper Sutton mentioned earlier, with respect to this, there is a perception that it would be handled differently if it was in a certain part of the city. I'm not agreeing with that. But that's, that's what I get out in, in these streets, and I'm in these streets. And to what Cooper Sutton was saying, I raised that point last year as it relates to solid waste. And that was definitely confirmed, but I'm not saying that that's the case here. I'm just sharing what my, part of what my reality is as I try to respond appropriately to constituents when the questions just keep coming and we find ourselves in this, in this rabbit hole, as I say, when they bring up other parts of the city. But I thank you for coming forth and sharing that feedback. Thank you as well. And I yield the floor.
All right. Appears all hearts and minds clear with this.
Good afternoon, everyone. It is 12:16 and good afternoon. And we are now calling the Budget and Audit Committee. Ms. Regal, you please call the roll.
Councilman Smiley. Councilwoman Spinosa. Councilwoman Green. Councilwoman Swearingen-Washington.
Present.
Councilwoman Logan. Councilwoman Walker. Councilwoman Cooper Sutton. Councilwoman Dr. Warren. Chair White.
Present, thank you. First, we have a resolution to allocate and appropriate 2.8 million in interest revenue from the American Rescue Plan Act allocation of 2021, all council districts sponsored by the administration. Motion from Councilwoman Dr. Warren, second from Councilwoman Swearingen-Washington. I see that we have the mayor here this afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor.
Good afternoon. Excited to see each and every one of you. Thank you for the hard work that you're putting in up here today and every week. This is one of those opportunities where we have a positive surprise for us. I know, right? This is 2.8 million dollars that have accrued as interest that came from the ARPA dollars that were allocated to the city. We have the opportunity to be able to invest those dollars into some things that I believe are important for our community. And I have a slate of items. And we also have the organizations that are here, at least the three of them, that will present. One of them is one that is more internal to the city. Each of them have a full presentation. I'll just give them to you off the cliff notes here. I know you have time limitations. We can get into the presentations however you want to do it. But I'll just run through 750,000 for Boys and Girls Club of Memphis. You all probably remember when there was an announcement that a number of their after-school programs had to go away. Thankfully, we heard that two of them were able to be restored by Boys and Girls Club. Two of them were able to be restored as a result of an investment from XAI. And we're looking to restore two of them for two years and also invest in two other ones for half of the cost for the second year to ensure that those keep going. Four of them for two years will be going as a result of that 750,000. 750,000 for Alliance Healthcare Services, who have been a significant partner to us as we look at mental health care in our community. They built an amazing facility over on Broad Avenue, which takes care of the adults, where they're building one adjacent to it that will help take care of our children and our young people. And we think this is an important means of investing in mental health. And then Pure Academy, which has been doing great work with our young people and have a fabulous location where they have young people that are learning. There's a residential component there. Well, this 400,000 is going to be able to be invested in some of the programming that they're doing at that facility to support those young people. And then lastly, is 900,000 that we are allocating towards what we're calling integrity in policing. You all probably remember back in late December, there was a DOJ report that was issued and later retracted. But in the wake of that issuance of the report, one of the things that we committed to as a city was to ensure that we had a task force that was going to be established, that we would have Judge Donald serve as the independent monitor for that task force, and that we would take on actions that would ensure that we're moving towards constant improvement within our police force in our police department. This 900,000 dollars would go towards funding the independent monitor, funding the independent studies that would be necessary to undertake that work and any other things needed. One point there, the average cost annually for cities that entered into consent decrees ranged from 1.4 to 3 million dollars annually. We thought that this 900,000 dollar amount is a good amount for us to be able to undertake this work and continue our commitment to the community irrespective of any involvement from the Department of Justice. So with that, I will stop and I'll ask you if you want to have individuals come up and give presentations or won't have more questions for me.
Well, first, let me find out before we get to questions. Personally, I know I don't have any Boys and Girls Club. I know exactly what they do, and I know about the school programming, Alliance Healthcare. I know Dr. Townsend, all of those over there have the adult center. Now they're doing the child one for psychiatric treatment, very, very needed. Pure Academy, we know what they do very well. We just need to figure out how to make them bigger and be able to take more people. The integrity in policing one, I know, I'm sure we probably got a couple of questions about, so. So is integrity, the other thing, I answered that question as well, Mayor, but also I would just, one quick question, was this not a part of, was there not a line item for this in the budget already? For this, no, so there's no funds allocated for?
Never allocated any direct funds for this effort during, in the budget.
Okay.
And so the question was, is integrity policing the same as community policing? And I would say that community policing is probably a part of integrity policing, but it's, integrity policing is the name that we gave to the effort when we said we are going to commit to constant improvement in our police department. And we said that we would establish this task force that would give us feedback on recommendations on how to improve policing. In order for them to give tangible feedback, they need to have subject matter experts that are able to actually talk about the things that we are doing now currently and how those things align with best practices nationwide. And so that's what those dollars would go towards, is funding those subject matter experts as well as the work of Judge Donald as the independent monitor.
We have Councilwoman Logan with a substitute to the resolution.
Thank you, Chair. Come on, colleagues. And thank you, Mayor, for bringing this. I am so grateful to know all of these little pockets of funding that we're finding and that we're able to use them. And we want to, I actually want to know of any others that we have and all of them that come online, so just in keeping with, you know, the spirit of transparency. So I did, we got this, when I got this and I saw the wonderful groups that were here, I'm very grateful and thankful for that. I do, though, have a substitute amendment for the integrity in policing. I do know that we have spent, we've spent quite a bit for that, and I know they, it wasn't a requirement, but it was in the DOJ report, so I get that. And I do know that the police got, received a hefty sum of money from the state. And with that being said, we, as we've been sharing this morning, there are a myriad of concerns that we have in the city, and I just want to put this forward regarding the 900,000. This is a resolution to allocate and appropriate American Rescue Plan ARPA interest revenue. And I'll just read somewhat of it. Whereas in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA was signed into law on March 1st, 2021. And whereas the City of Memphis received fiscal recovery funds from the United States Treasury in the amount of 161,601,490 dollars. And whereas the ARPA funds were held in escrow and have subsequently generated interest. Whereas research has shown that blight remediation can, can reduce crime in communities, making it a worthy investment. And whereas the City of Memphis has made it a priority to enhance blight remediation efforts within the City of Memphis by adopting various initiatives such as establishing a blight task force, providing funds, funding for Shelby County Environmental Court Indigenous Fund to help, Indigent Fund to help resolve blight cases, promoting dumpster days across councils, districts, and other associated efforts. And whereas the Memphis City Council desires to make, to continue making blight remediation a priority so that it positively impacts the quality of life of citizens, property values, economic investment, and cleanliness of neighborhoods throughout the city, now therefore be resolved that the Memphis City Council does hereby request that 900,000 of the available interest revenue from the City of Memphis, City of Memphis ARPA funds be allocated and appropriated as follows. Number one, funding for blight mitigation to include legal personnel, land acquisition, and other vacant land acquisition and other associated costs for blight remediation. Number two, in the event that restrictions related to the use of this funding arise, the remaining funds shall be allocated equally to these divisions. Division of Public Works, Street Maintenance for Potholes Repair. Division of Engineering for Sidewalk Assistance, Sidewalk Assistance Fund. We already have one, but this is to add to that. The establishment of a Tree Removal Fund with eligibility requirements to be similar to those for the Sidewalk Assistance Fund. And finally, Division of Engineering, Installation of Speed Humps, Treat, and three additional convenience centers. With that, I know there may be some things that have to be worked out regarding that, but these are issues that we've been talking about at length this morning and at length, you know, as council members. So I wanted to see, move this forward and get feedback from council members in this regard. This will go to potholes, as we've talked about, our existing Sidewalk Assistance Fund, Tree Removal, and, and the three additional convenience centers that we voted on, as well as installation of speed humps. And these are in throughout all of our districts. And to that, I still move.
Well, before we do that, to just clean this up, since yours is presented as a completely new resolution, but it only pertains to a portion of the resolution that was presented by the administration, instead of doing it as a friendly amendment, can we get a motion to maybe bifurcate the 900,000 from?
So move.
Second. Okay, we have a motion from Councilwoman Green and a second from Councilwoman Dr. Warren to bifurcate the integrity in policing allocation of 900,000 dollars in funding to support studies and work groups intended to strengthen integrity in policing and relationships between the Memphis Police Department and the community. Can any, all those in favor of bifurcating? Any opposed? Okay, so the ayes have it. So let's first handle the motion before us, which would include the Boys and Girls Club, Alliance Healthcare Services, and Pure Academy. Now, I don't want to short anyone because, of course, for public transparency and those things, but we've had all three of these groups come up here before. If you all don't mind standing, representatives from Pure Academy, Dr. Townsend, do we, we have, where's Boys and Girls Club? I know they're here. There we go. Hello. Thank you all so much for coming. We are so appreciative of the work that you all do. Thank you. You all are the pieces that we know to the puzzle to make our city better, to, for it to be a thriving city. We're so grateful for the work you do, and we're excited to be able to allocate these funds to your organizations. You all have completed work. We've seen your work. You have done it with excellence, and we just need more of it. Thank you. Yes, all those in favor of the bifurcated, well, what, for the bifurcated one?
That's the one we're talking about, all those in favor of the first part.
Well, we moved that one. So all those in favor of the bifurcated one regarding Boys and Girls Club, Alliance Healthcare Services, Pure Academy, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, that'll go down to our, is that what I'm saying, nine minutes? Okay, no, same nine minutes. This will go down in our next council meeting. So now let's take a Councilwoman Logan's motion. Let's move it, have a motion in a second. Who's second? Motion, uh, motion moved from Councilwoman Spinosa, second from Councilwoman Ford. Councilwoman Logan, you've already kind of explained any discussion on Councilwoman Logan's. So yes, Councilwoman Logan is proposing that instead of the 900,000 dollar allocation for integrity in policing, that the 900,000 dollars be allocated to blight mitigation to include legal personnel, land acquisition, and other associated costs for blight remediation. Councilwoman Green, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I would say when I received this, I had a lot of questions about what integrity policing is, and I believe Chief Davis isn't available today. So I don't, I don't have a good way, right this moment, Councilwoman Logan, to weigh what this is originally proposed to go to versus what you're proposing it go to. To be able to vote on it, I would ask that we hold this for two weeks. In the interim, I think your very first question or comment was to our CFO, Harrison, about, it's great that we found this pocket of money. I'd love to know how much more is out there. And I agree. I think when we come back, if we could also receive that, because I'm not clear, this is a, this is a very round number, and I get, I guess suspicious with round numbers, what exactly we have earned from interest from the ARPA funds. Because I know, you know, you and I went back and forth about 1.2 million to raise everybody's pay to 40,000 dollars. And we didn't have that during budget time, but now we found 2.8 million. And so it's concerning to me that I didn't see this in the budget, because I assume you had projections of what the interest would be. So I would, I would like to know, you know, how much is left in interest. I also, when you return, or you may be able to answer this today, is what our current fund balance is, where it ended at 2025? And if we had to draw down, because I believe at the last meeting I was at, you said it was at 100 million, and you didn't think we were going to have to draw down anymore. So I'm just, I'm trying to level set because we might be able to do both. We might not have to keep fighting over the same little small pot of money. We might be able to address blight. And I, I just, I truly need more information on what integrity policing is. I think it's probably mislabeled. Let me just start there, because the police officers I meet, I think, do have integrity.
It's the name of an initiative.
Okay, I get it. But, you know, it, it feels a little not great. I think I'm probably very in favor, but I need Police Chief Davis here to give me a little bit more detail. Or, you know, y'all can also provide it to us in the interim about exactly what this would go to. Like, I know, for example, we talked about in the DOJ report, some of the problems that surrounded children who had disabilities, and some of the things she's implemented to be able to bring in ABA therapists and to have sensory bags in the cars and things like that, I'm supportive of. But I, I can't really tell that from this blank resolution. And, you know, I am definitely supportive of blight remediation efforts. You know, I have a blight ordinance. We were out there talking about it. So I kind of need to be able to balance them, or I need to see if there's pockets of money to do both. So I guess I'm asking that, you know, we hold this for two weeks so that we can get some more information between now and then.
Can I get a motion in a second? Motion to hold from Janice Swearingen-Washington, second from Councilwoman Cooper Sutton. All those in favor holding this matter for two weeks regarding the 900,000 dollars, say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. This will go on, on our agenda, committee agenda in two weeks.
Can I speak to it?
You may, Mayor.
I'm fine with the, with the hold for two weeks, and I understand getting more information. But I do want to be clear that the integrity in policing effort is as a result of the dialogues that we had at the end of last year. And we have established the task force. Judge Donald has been in place, and we certainly can bring more information around what it consists of. I want to say that I'm deeply supportive of blight remediation and all efforts around blight. I think this administration has taken a lot of big steps in that, in that direction. And so deeply supportive of the direction. It's just finding a way to do all of the things that we need. And we do need to support the efforts around integrity in policing financially, because the cities that have been under consent decrees have spent substantially more in order to get all of the recommendations and all of the things that the courts are dictating that they do to make those improvements. We're trying to put dollars towards making those improvements on our own, and that's what this dollars are for. But we'll talk about it more in two weeks.
Thank you. We also had.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Chief Person. I didn't see you over there talking. I apologize.
I think Councilwoman Green wanted me to address the issue of the funding.
Well, you can, in two weeks.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do it all, all in two weeks.
Yes, ma'am.
We, in this order, we're gonna, and we're a little bit behind you all, so remember, we're moving this two weeks. Councilwoman Warren, Councilwoman Cooper Sutton, and then Councilwoman Logan. Thank you. Councilwoman Cooper Sutton.
Thank you, Chairwoman. I totally concur with what you all are agreement, that 900,000 dollars, I need a outline on what this money looks like, what it's going to do, and the word integrity kind of throws me off a little bit, because that should be number one with any task force or any, anything that we're dealing with. This city should have the integrity. And 900,000 dollars to go to this task force, we have not even seen a layout, a plan. Only thing, we've heard that it exists. I've heard people been fired, been let go because of their being very opinionated and very concerned about what's happening in our city. And we don't want anything to happen like it has happened before, in decades and decades before this current recent incident that happened. So 900,000 dollars is a lot of money to be allocated when we got bigger issues, blight issues, we have a task force that's dealing with that. And it's just, it's just a lot of things that are, that are going on. And just being new on this council and to see how you can find money, find money, find money when you need to find money, and the money that needs to really be allocated and really put into places, we totally ignore, and we have to try to find money. And I concur with Councilwoman Green. We asked where's that money. I'm not talking about, you know, different raises or whatever, but here is a rounded out number of interest that we found out of nowhere, and we've been begging and just asking for money, any way we can help anyone. I saw the faces when I opposed. I totally agree with what Pure Academy is doing. I wish we could have 100 more of them. I agree with what Alliance is doing, but I've worked with Alliance, and I know that you all have a new building. But what I do not see is numbers, metrics, how we are improving, just not medicating, just not medicating, but how are we making these people productive citizens? We don't have any numbers. We don't have any metrics. We don't see anything. We just want to keep allocating funding. The YMCA, 100%. Because we know what it did for our communities and what it does for the children. that look like me, that attend in those communities where we're trying to reinvest and put the money back. And so, I don't mind working with your administration. I agree 100%, but I want numbers and we are data center and we need metrics. I need to see where this $750,000, what is it going for? How are you going to use it and not on salaries and paying people? I need to see what you're doing in the community, how you're in it. I went on a long, a ride along and I don't even think this exists anymore. And I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Alliance partnered with the fire department. Is that right? I went on a ride along and it was this young man that was from Winston Constant. And there was a criteria, criteria that the rider that worked with Alliance, he was having auricular hallucinations. He had a hatchet, thought he had a hatchet. He was hiding behind someone's house. But instead of the criteria that Alliance processed, he didn't meet them, but he's out there having hallucinations. He's hearing things. He didn't meet the criteria, but you all wanted to send him down to 201 and lock him up in jail when he needed to be helped. Yeah, 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 yeah. I'll get the date and time. And I asked the nurse that was on the ride, "Who created these criterias?" "I worked with you all many, many years ago with Care More Health. I worked with Alliance. We have a lot of patients that came there. But we need numbers. We need metrics. We need to see what you're doing in the community. Disability, as Green talked about. I may not be the sharpest knife, but I'm sure in the hell ain't the dullest one. And we got to do better. I want to know what it's going for, how it's going to be used and who it's being used for and the work that you're actually doing at Alliance. $750,000, hey, that's no big deal. But how is it being used? What it looks like? Who is it helping? Not just medicating people. Are we putting them back in the streets to be productive citizens? And we have other resources where they can go to and have a quality of life? Quality." I yield the floor.
Thank you, Councilwoman, uh, Councilwoman Logan. If you'll wrap us up and we've got to head on out by 12:45 for an attorney client. Yes, ma'am?
Very briefly, I, I'm very much in favor of the hold. I do, that'll give me time to bring back even something as small as the three conven- convenience centers. This morning we were talking about those. They, the last numbers I got, they were $50,000 each. Then when we did, when we approved them as counsel in the blight task force a couple of few years ago. So we could have a convenience center in every dish, in every region of the area, north, south, east and west. That's just something as small and you're talking about $150,000. So, there are other things that are in here that need to be addressed and all of us have these issues in our district. Our constituents are calling us about these matters. And so, any, a million, almost a million dollars that can go toward these and the establishment of some of these areas that are not covered. So, we, I appreciate, like I said, you all holding this and we'll come back with specific numbers and a total amount. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman. My understanding is that we've got a divided question. So the first piece went down with favorable recommendation. The, I guess what is now the amended resolution will be held for, for two weeks and come back into committee. And then, so that moves us to item number two. However, and I do apologize, but we are behind and we do have an attorney client that is critically important to a later meeting. So I'm going to have to move first eight to our next meeting and I apologize for that. But we, we just cannot miss this, we, we just cannot miss the schedule. So with that, we are adjourned.
Thank you. Councilwoman Green. Councilwoman Walker. Councilwoman Cooper Sutton. Councilwoman White. And Councilman Warren. Chair Ford Senior.
President. We have one item that's the monthly report related to transit. All council districts requested by the Transportation Committee. Y'all want to come forward? Mr. Lewis, who all you've got here? We can start. Read whenever you want.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the City Council Transportation Committee. I'm John Lewis, interim chief executive officer of the Memphis Area Transit Authority. It's a pleasure to be with you once again. With me on my left is Eric Stevenson, the MADA's chief administrative officer. And as mentioned earlier, several of our board members have joined us this afternoon. The committee has requested a lot of information from MADA since our last meeting, and we hope that you've had time to digest the information that we've provided. Staff has worked hard to be as complete and transparent as possible in meeting both your ad hoc information requests and, of course, the recently passed resolution outlining procedures for monthly reporting related to transit. We've submitted well over 2,000 pages in total information. So rather than trying to distill that down, we'd like to give you an option. We can go through a real quick PowerPoint that we have on the screen or give members maximum time for questions. Either way, I'd like to give the committee a choice in how they'd like to proceed. Okay. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I did want to take a brief moment to highlight some of our achievements over the past month as we continue to work on a daily basis to deliver our back-to-basics strategy that we identified in order to honor our commitment to our customers and the community, and that's firmly grounded in three principles: rebuilding community trust, creating satisfied customers, and leveraging the city's investment in transit. During the past month, we've reached several important operational milestones. Our maintenance department has reached 100% vehicle availability for fixed route service each morning. Rubber-wheeled trolley service on Main Street was established to provide mobility options until we get the steel-wheeled trolleys recertified and ready for service. And in that vein, we expect to have the steel-wheeled trolleys ready for recertification by TDOT, the Texas Department of Texas, the Tennessee Department of Transportation, before the end of this month at a total repair cost for the redundant braking system at less than $30,000 for the entire system, not the millions of dollars that you were told by prior leadership that led to the shutdown of the system. We will begin receiving delivery of the first of 15 new paratransit vans this month, which will enable us to increase reliability of our service to our most vulnerable of our riders, our elderly and disabled. MADA's new chief financial officer begins on Monday, the first full-time chief financial officer the agency have had in almost two years. And MADA's executive search committee will begin interviewing candidates for chief executive officer on Thursday. I'm going to begin the PowerPoint in a minute. Yes. So with that, I'm going to turn to the council resolution that was established for our monthly presentation in regard to the fiduciary duties and the requirements of MADA moving forward that requires us to present information no later than the second Monday of each month. In that, a high-level overview, there are multiple requirements that were outlined in the resolution, first of which is a high-level overview of key developments, challenges, and achievements. I've mentioned a couple of these in my remarks, but just to go back through, 100% of vehicle availability for fixed route service we've achieved over the last month. Dropping our missed trips from 33% when we first started in February, a full one-third of our daily trips were not provided when we started in February, and we've gotten that down to single digits. We've averaged 7% over the last couple of months. And we believe we are firmly committed to getting that to zero. And our plan for that, as we continue to bring in gently-used vehicles, we will get additional vehicles from a sister agency in Louisville by the end of the month and get those on the street in September to help us bridge that timeframe until our first delivery of new Gillig 40-foot vehicles arrives in January of next year. 12 new vehicles that we have ordered will arrive in early 2026. As I mentioned, rubber-wheeled trolley service has begun on Main Street, and we're moving towards recertification of the steel-wheeled trolleys. And we're working with TDOT to begin that recertification testing at the end of this month. And I mentioned the successful recruitment of a chief financial officer. Some was reported in that submission, which we have then finalized, the recruitment of that CFO. The board executive search committee begins interviews for the new CEO. We'll be continuing to work towards finalization of a CEO recruitment, recertification of the trolley steel-wheel cars, and initiate the city council process for acquisition of 2,500 Ketchum Boulevard. I do want to take a moment to highlight the importance of that. One of our two major capital projects is the replacement of our operations and maintenance facility at Levy Road. We've identified property at 2,500 Ketchum Boulevard, which is funded, will be funded. The acquisition of that will be funded jointly by federal funds and city CIP funds. I understand that there is a requisite city council process to enable MADA to acquire real property. We'd like to get that started as soon as possible, and we'll work with you to begin that process. Next, within the financial documentation to support the grantees' requests, we provided over 1,600 pages of documentation, including invoices, check reconciliation registered, 125 verified checks for paying over 109 vendors, accounting for over $2 million in payables in that submission. Financial overview summarizing operating expenditures versus our approved budget. Our expenditures each month is budgeted about 4.8, even though our drawdowns are averaging about 2.1. Our expenditures per month is about 4.8. In that documentation that we provided, it shows that the actual expenditures for June was just over $4 million, at $4,7,500. Next, financial overview summarizing our operating expenditures versus the approved budget and the status of active grants. I mentioned our number-one priority from a capital standpoint is the replacement of our operations and maintenance facility at Levy Road. MADA was awarded a federal grant, $54 million, to fund that project that is matched by city funds. We continue to work with the Federal Transit Administration to obligate those funds. Unfortunately, even though those funds were awarded several years ago, the funds were not obligated to MADA. Now, using Federal Transit Administration terminology in that, what does obligation of funds mean? It means that those funds are not in MADA's accounts yet. Even though that grant was awarded to MADA, there were a number of steps that MADA had to take in order to be able to draw down those funds for expenditures. And we can get into more detail of that, but part of that was the grant required that MADA went after to achieve that award. MADA had said that it was going to grow this facility, that this facility was going to house over 250 buses, electric buses, and 90 paratransit vehicles. 250 buses, imagine when we are currently running 54 buses on the street each day. So our first priority was to work with the FTA to bring that pie-in-the-sky award back down to reality. And we asked to amend that original award from 250 electric buses to a maximum of 150 diesel vehicles. That grant editing and re-award is now with the Secretary of Transportation's office, being revised and is under consideration. The challenge that we have with that is, upon award of that, the agency went and spent $1.4 million, even though it did not have access to that $54 million grant. So we have worked very hard to bring that grant back into reality, to work with the FTA to get access to that $54 million so that we can pay off the $1.4 million that the agency has already spent to accelerate the acquisition and obligation of those funds so that we can move forward with property acquisition and design of the new plans for this facility because this grant still has an expiration date of December of 2025. And then the innovation corridor, which is well underway. This grant has been obligated. Design work, right-of-way acquisition, has been underway for the Design work, right-of-way acquisition has been underway for this. And MATA is working with our partners at the city to continue design of this project that will enable us to move this important mobility project into operations by 2031. Scheduling planning, a summary of route changes and service interruptions. MATA is implementing minor schedule changes. On August 10th, our new service change will be in action. Over the last month, we've engaged with the public, with public meetings, to explain those service changes as required under FTA regulation. These service changes will be revenue-neutral in nature. Will increase reliability and service frequency on some of our routes. Combine some of our routes and improve service on early-morning access and late-night access on some of those routes that we identify here on those and that were outlined in our submittal a week ago. Again, all of these are revenue-neutral. They will not require any additional funding in our FY '26 budget. Moving to ridership. Ridership continues to remain stagnant in that. Our 50 Poplar and 36 Lamar remain our top ridership routes. Going through our service offerings to our worst-performing routes, the 37 Perkins, the 28 Airport, and 34 Central and Walnut Group. Fleet status, summary of route changes, service interruptions, and fleet status. We included reports in our submittal. Our daily fixed route service calls for 54 buses. We have been averaging, as I mentioned earlier, 56 buses available for service each day. We have a total of 98 fixed route vehicles in our fleet. There are 65 fixed route vehicles that are able to be deployed each day. And there are 33 vehicles that are non-deployable due to maintenance issues that are beyond the ability to be fixed. From a MATA Plus fleet status, from our MATA Plus and on-demand, we have 61, service calls for 61 vehicles each day. We have an average of 67 available for service. 67 total in our fleet, 61 available for service each day, and six are non-deployable due to maintenance issues. This chart outlays some of our maintenance activities throughout the year. The operating days of our fleets, the mileage and gas consumption from a diesel and gas standpoint for the MATA fleet, both from a fixed route and a MATA Plus standpoint. Our breakdowns from our maintenance department, the issues that we're having, and the categories of those breakdowns, from axles to brakes, engines, transmissions, et cetera, on a monthly basis. From a human resources standpoint, during the month of June, where we're 12 hires and 13 terminations. Those hires are outlined in this chart. All of those hires are focused on an operations standpoint. Even in those areas that are titled administrative, those are administrative positions that are supporting operations. So accounting analysts, schedulers, and reservationists, and coin room clerk. Here's a list of terminations, both from an operations standpoint. As was mentioned, there were 13 terminations during that month. Lastly, from a safety standpoint, the types of safety issues across all of our operating areas, from our onboard and off-board our vehicles. Here are the categories, from assault, simple assault, aggravated assault, theft, unfortunately, exhibitionism on and around our vehicles and property, drug drunkenness, and mental health issues. Those are the categories that we track on a monthly basis. And then from an incident standpoint, from our vehicles, these are from the last quarter. We have had during the month of April, less than 10 incidents, both preventable and non-preventable. And then in the month of May, we had a bit of a spike on non-preventable. Those non-preventable are incidents that were not the fault of our bus operators and paratransit operators. And then in June, those numbers went back down to less than, to seven in June, preventable incidents, and six non-preventable. And then we continue our efforts to improve safety from a training and aspect. Incident management continues from an employee training. Safety committees, both management and operator standpoint. Our communications team continues to push out internal safety communications to our operations team. There are targeted improvements and focusing on high complaint bus stops, working with our safety and security team, looking at policy updates. If there are bus routes that need to be considered to be rerouted or changed due to construction or areas where preventable incidents happen, we work with our scheduling team to see if there are characteristics that are non-driver-related that we can address that will help raise the safety of our riding public. Mr. Chair, that ends our presentation. And if there are any questions, be happy to address those now. Thank you for your time.
Before I get to council members, I read those 1,600-plus pages.
I'm sure you did, sir.
Every one of them. A lot of it condensed down to probably about 200 pages. But I read it. Okay, all of them. Okay, we got council members first, Councilwoman Logan. No, you joined us. You don't want to speak. Do you want to speak? Okay, okay, good enough. We've got Vice Chair, Swearingen Washington.
Thank you, Chairman. You're the top of them. Who do we contact for passengers who are having challenges with MATA Plus? I had someone to reach out yesterday, and they were trying to get assistance in reaching someone to be transported to dialysis.
So that for scheduling a ride?
Yes.
Yes, that would be our operations manager, that is LaBarbara Houston. And we can get, we've sent a contact list of all of our directors and chiefs to the committee chair, and we'd be happy to share that with members.
But they are still picking up passengers?
Oh, yes, ma'am. Absolutely, on a daily basis.
All right, and one of our council members, Councilwoman Cooper Sutton, someone had contacted her and said that the routes in the Frazier area had been canceled. Is that?
Are MATA Plus or?
No, just drivers. I think just the route, period, right? The general fleet.
Well, we haven't eliminated any routes. So I will look into that, see if there's any miscommunication. But no routes in our system have been eliminated on the August 10th service change. There may be some miscommunication in that.
Well, this lady can't even get picked up for Sunday, and she's disabled.
So we're talking MATA Plus?
I just know that, I got a text, and it's been going on for two weeks, and they said that the routes in Frazier had been canceled. And to me, that's a great hardship. And we just need to make sure that whatever needs to be fixed for Frazier community, which is a impoverished community, which is this entire city that we know of, needs to be addressed and fixed. Or an explanation on what's happening and what's going on. And I don't want to give you the address over the, but I'll give it to you before you leave. I don't want to disclose the address on where this is happening at in the community.
If we can talk offline.
We can talk offline, and I can give you the address.
And we can go back and check.
And they're disabled, and they're seniors. So that's a hardship when they can't get to where they need to be, whether it's on Sundays, Mondays, Tuesdays, or Wednesdays. We need to make sure that we're providing services in these areas.
Yes, sir. As well, Councilwoman Cooper Sutton. Also, specifically, if you could get with us to, after the meeting, we can determine the specifics. Sometimes they need to be in a specific range and area so we can figure out exactly where they are. Because we've had a similar issue in the Whitehaven area that we're addressing. So, yes, ma'am.
And it was addressed?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It was addressed.
So we can talk offline?
Yes, ma'am.
And we can try to get this address?
Yes, ma'am.
And make sure that the constituent is provided with the services that we promised the city that we would provide?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yeah, we had a problem like that. That's why we've already checked. You got to kind of be in a certain range. Councilwoman Walker, we can do, she said she has to leave. Is that okay with everybody for her to go? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, colleagues. Okay, I got a million questions, and I guess I'll ask two. So with the steel wheeled trolleys, once they're back up and running, is that just for Main Street, or does that also include the Madison Corridor?
We're focused on Main Street at the moment.
Will Main Street ever have the trolleys again?
Main Street?
I'm sorry, will Madison?
Yeah. Right now, we're focusing on Main Street. It is possible that we can move towards Madison, but there are two things on Madison. Funding is a significant issue on that, but we have not, excuse me. We have not looked at the potential structural issues that may align on the Madison Corridor. We have only been asked to review the Main Street Corridor. So I don't want to give you an answer without being able to give you an informed answer. We've only been asked to focus on the Main Street Corridor.
Okay, so when you say "we've only been asked," who is "we" and who needs to ask you to take a look at Madison as well?
So Madison has been out of service for quite some time, is my understanding. And so when we were engaged and asked by the city to reengage the trolley, it was only in regard to the Main Street Corridor. So I don't know why the Madison Corridor was taken out of service. So I'll have to go back and look at the history of that and find out what the reasons were.
Okay, thank you for that. So the constituents continue to ask about MATA. So that's why it keeps, excuse me, about Madison. And that's why it keeps coming up. Earlier, you had mentioned something about the $54 million federal grant, and you said the city was going to have matching funds?
Yes. There are matching funds for all capital, for all capital projects. In order to get federal funds, there must be a requisite match from local.
So you're saying in order for you to get this $54 million from the feds, we're going to have to give you $54 million?
Those matching funds have already been identified.
Okay, that was going to be my next question. They've been identified, and they are secured.
They are secured.
Okay, you had mentioned about paying the agency off, the 1 point, what was that?
Yes, $1.4 million has already been expended by MATA before they obligated the funds. So the agency was spending money before the funds were in their bank.
So is there a plan for you all to pay the city back the money that you owe the city?
You owe the city?
Mm-hmm.
For?
A $20 million bridge loan.
Oh. Bridge loan happened before I got here, so I?
So the $20 million bridge loan that took place before you got here, I'm kindly asking, is there a plan to pay that back to the city?
I can't speak to that.
Okay, I'm almost done. So broken benches at the bus stops. What department does that fall under? Are those monitored periodically? Can we get some upgrades with that? Who does one call for broken benches?
At MATA bus stops, that is, we have a bus stop amenity program at MATA, and we are refunding, reinstituting that program. That program has not been funded at MATA for quite some time. We have a number of shelters that have been sitting in a warehouse. Right now, we're bringing to the MATA Board a procurement that will allow us to get an architectural and engineering firm to come in and reinvigorate that program. And that will include all of the buses to be able to rehab old bus stop locations and to build the new ones.
Okay, that would, yeah, that would be great. Because off the top of my head, there is a broken bench on the northeast corner of Feronia and Shelby Drive. And then there is also one on the northeast corner of Winfield and Loc Lomond. That's L-O-C-H, second word, L-O-M-O-N-D. And finally, thank you all for your patience. And finally, my favorite rapper of all times was Tupac. And a lot of times, people would say Tupac. And I just want to make a point of that it is that Memphis Area Transit Authority is MATA, not MATA. Thank you, and I yield the floor.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for those questions, Councilwoman Walker and Swearingen Washington and Cooper Sutton. I think it's important to note that this council has invested into MATA to the tune of at least $30 million a year, sometimes up to $50 million as we talked about that bridge loan. And yet today, we're talking about broken benches and people who are on dialysis not being able to be picked up, disabled people not being able to get to church, large areas that are important areas like Frazier and Whitehaven not getting service. At the same time that, you know, I've now been here for a year and eight months, and I have yet to, how many hours? I've yet to have MATA, in any form of leadership, come in here and be honest about the state of affairs. I continue to get glowing reports about how things are going. And I can't tell you how frustrating that is. Not just because I have read 1,600 pages, and I know you keep saying that number. And as a lawyer, I will tell you, when you want to confuse someone, you bury them in paper. and I know you keep saying that number, and as a lawyer, I will tell you, when you want to confuse someone, you bury them in paper. But I am so frustrated for the people who try, and I say "try," to ride the bus. I'm not going to say "ride the bus." The constituents we hear from, you know, I had mapped out from my house, from your own app, what it would take for me to get from my house to this office. And that's assuming everything runs on time. Do y'all know how long it would take me? An hour and a half. That's if everything runs on time, and the first part of my trip was a twenty-minute walk to the closest bus stop in the hundred-and-degree heat. There's a great book out there, everybody on this council and out there should read. It's called "Lying with Statistics." I'm going to give you an example of it right now. Your little memorandum to us on July thirty-first says, "A hundred percent of vehicles availability for fixed route services each morning." That sounds great. That sounds like we've improved some things. We're only talking about fixed routes. We're not talking about the people who are trying to get to a dialysis appointment. And we're only talking about the morning, each morning. Buses have to run all day. People need them from morning to night. And you kind of reach that when you say that although we're still having some challenges keeping buses available all day. The reality is, one missed bus for somebody who's trying to make it to a job interview and doesn't get it can mean whether they make their rent or not. If they can't make their rent, then they're going to be on the street. So, it's frustrating for me, who believes so strongly in solid public transportation and understands what it means for the people of this community. I was a public defender for many years. My clients used public transportation. But could I tell them that they should take an hour and a half every day to get to where they need to go? It's absurd, and that's if everything runs on time. And the solutions that you are proposing here, you know, everything costs money. You're talking about new gently-used buses, a new CFO, a new CEO, a new facility, and you're telling us you don't, you already don't have enough money. And it's strange to think that we should trust this process, because the most important pages I got were this forty-page report from Pricewaterhouse. This, you know, when you issued your operational report of Mata, I said it was scathing. This is disgusting. This is shameful. Anyone who had a hand in this should be beyond embarrassed. Because this is a waste of taxpayers' dollars in print. And so, I'm going to try, in my time here, to be really, really watchful of what we spend our money on. Because you even admit, like, the people who got here before you were telling us that it was going to cost two million dollars to fix the trolleys, and now you're saying it's only going to cost thirty. I don't understand what the difference is there and why nobody's explained that. But let's move on to what you think you're going to do. And you say, "We have Mata representatives in Detroit right now." I cannot believe we're paying for anybody to fly anywhere else right now. And they're up there working on obtaining fifteen para-transit vehicles. And in the paragraph before that, you say, "The city's thirty-point-six million dollars was insufficient to fund the para-transit service." Why are we buying buses for something we can't afford to run? Why are we sending people to Detroit to do it? I am beyond frustrated. I get that we need to be able to do more and better and more reliable transportation. I understand that takes money. But I agree with Councilwoman Walker. There's a plan to pay some people back, but never pay us back. In fact, what you say is, "The city will need to find funding to operate this service." No, the city has found funding. Where else are you looking for funding? Have you been to the county? Have you been to Germantown? They get service too. Have you been to the state? This is not a division of the city of Memphis. We invest in it because we believe in public transportation and what it means to our community and the needs that it's supposed to meet. But here's the dollar and cents and the real bottom line. We pay you millions, and I don't mean you, I mean Mata, although we probably have paid you specifically a lot of money. A lot, a lot, millions of dollars every year to get people from point A to point B. And this document shows me that instead, we bought a Grizzly suite, and we racked up credit card charges, and we sent people on trips. And we can't even find the documentation to uncover what half this stuff is. I think everyone here else is being quiet, but the fury that is boiling right beneath the surface of everybody up here, board, you should know, is at, out of a one to ten, we're at a twenty. And to have, one more time, somebody sit in front of me and tell me, "One hundred percent of vehicle availability for fixed routes of service each morning." I can't have another glowing, wonderful report. And I can't have another suggestion that we should continue to pour millions of dollars. If there was any other division in the city of Memphis, in your government, in local, state, wherever, that was running on fraud, waste, and abuse, you wouldn't ask me to double or triple the funding. I think everybody, I hope you've read your sixteen hundred pages. I definitely hope you've read this forty. And I hope that you understand that when you come to us and tell us things are great, not a single person up here believes it. Thank you, Chair.
Mr. Chair, if I could address, like Chair brought up some important issues. I do want to clarify that the reason why these service issues are as dire as they are is because the agency, the average age of the buses in this fleet is over fourteen years old. Every other transit agency in this country buys buses every single year. The capital program that you have in your book has this agency planned to buy between six and ten vehicles every year for the next five years that we funded. This agency hasn't bought a bus in the last eight years.
Wait, 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 wait. Chief Pearson, don't walk away, don't walk away. How much do we have in CIP for Mata?
And while you're getting that, let me ask you. We were given the figure before you got here. How much do each bus cost?
Right now, right now, buses are eight hundred thousand apiece. Now, that's ridiculous. Last year, you could buy a bus for six hundred fifty thousand. But for multiple reasons that are national and international, the price has spiked. But you can't, the market for vehicles, you can't just go, you can't just go down to the local bus dealership, even if you had all the money in the world and just go buy ten off the lot. You have to buy them to order. The first thing we did, and the city has funded Mata from a CIP standpoint, there was backdated money from Mata that Mata hadn't spent in years that we cobbled together to go buy buses. But they won't get here until next January.
Right.
So, we've had to borrow buses from other agencies that have got new buses coming in. Louisville graciously allowed us, because they're getting brand-new buses delivered now. And so, you can have our old buses, because we're getting new ones in, just to get us over the hump until we can get the new vehicles that we brought in May.
Chair, if we could have the CFO answer the CIP question?
I'm going to let you, let me ask you one more thing. This is the diesel buses, right?
Yes, sir.
Electric buses?
We're not buying electric buses. Electric buses are one point two million.
Yeah, but let me just ask you, the federal government will give money for electric buses. They will, they won't give us a dime for diesel buses.
No, that policy has changed.
So, they've changed it?
Yes. New administration has changed, and it has gone the exact opposite.
Okay, that's the Trump thing, ain't it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just want to know. Okay, I'm trying to be clear. You know, that's why I said, yeah, I read those sixteen pages all the way down to Starbucks. Okay. Chick-fil-A. So, I read all the pages. Few little things wasn't in there that I need to ask y'all about. Yeah, that's, okay.
Because we talk a lot about the thirty million that we give them for operating funds, and we pointed out today, there's also CIP money. So, how much do we allocate for CIP money?
Walter Person, CFO, One Twenty-Five North Main. I don't have the CIP budget for me, but I can say from memory that it is well over fifteen million dollars, probably close to twenty million dollars of CIP money altogether allocated for this year.
Thank you.
Thank you. I hope and very prayerful that the people that are in Detroit is eating McDonald's and not folks' filings, first of all, on the taxpayers' dollars. Secondly, is that the new CEO or CFO or wherever they got to come from, I hope they don't come from what's already within the department. Please do not bring anyone that has been part of this. Do not bring them as a suggestion. Secondly, is I hope that you all leave here knowing and having a strategy for however length of time that you remain, getting these routes fixed. And the money is getting the route fixed for the people. And as my colleague, Councilwoman Green, Vice Chair Green said, you know, we're just a funding source. However, it is the taxpayers' dollars that we're using as a funding source. And they should have adequate service being provided to them. So, I hope you leave here with a plan, saying we're going to have a strategy and a plan in place, because we've heard this council. Get those routes fixed for the people. Get the routes fixed for the people. Even if you got to get out of your suits and ties, skirts and dresses and heels, and get out in the streets and find out what's really going on. Get from behind the desk. Go talk to the people. When I see people sitting on crates, they're sitting on crates. That mean they're taking the crates from one bus stop to the next, so they can sit there. Get out and see what's happening. No more paper pushers. Thank you. Fix the routes.
I got another question about buses. You said electric buses one point two?
Yes, sir.
Diesel buses are eight hundred thousand. You got about a four-hundred-thousand-dollar difference for the future. First of all, how many electric buses do we have?
Right now, we have three.
Three?
That's not included, that price that I gave you is not including the charging equipment.
Okay. Okay, that's the charging equipment. Yeah. How much gas do y'all use, diesel?
It's in one, we'll have to get that amount.
I'm trying to compare which would be better, and I'm looking at the future.
It is.
Okay.
We, also, the, when you look at, just broad stroke, the cost of electric versus diesel, overall, from maintenance included and the cost of fuel, electric is better. But right now, for this agency, we don't have, this agency doesn't have the facilities nor the expertise to manage that complicated system.
Yeah.
We have three vehicles on, only one is in service.
What about the other two?
Can't we, they can't keep, we don't, the, don't have the technical expertise to keep them on the street.
Now, Louisville, how many buses you said they're trying to give?
They're giving us twelve.
Twelve, for how much money?
No money.
Just go give it to us.
The amount to transfer them, to get the tags, taxes, tags, and the, to get the vehicles here. And then, and then whatever federal life they may have in it, we're going to assume that useful life from the feds.
Okay, good, thank you.
You can take me out the queue, thank you. Thank you, Chair. And I thank my colleagues for robust discussion today, and very enlightening to the public. And that's why we're here. It's not to embarrass you all, but we are responsible for the dollars in which we invest, and it just hadn't turned out well over the years, as it relates to our constituents. And some time ago, when I first came on, I asked for a study of the bus stops and the, these shelters in the bench program, as well as the, it was an advertising, you all had an advertising program to where the shelters were not maintained by Mata, but that the agencies that rented them or leased them, they advertised on them, the shelters, and those, they had benches on them. So, while I, during my first term, they discarded all of those. They cut out that advertising program. I think Lamar owned some, Lamar, the same people that owned the billboards and things like that, because I was very concerned that people were standing in the sun for hours and in the elements and with the dogs and, you know, trying to carry bags and senior, you know, I would see seniors at the stops with nowhere to sit, and so, I was very concerned. Even, we've, you all, we have had the discussion, we know where you are, we get the sixteen hundred pages. Y'all know what the situation is. But for those that are still riding the bus now, really trying to make their experience better. I know I heard you say you all are bringing back one of the programs that you have, but that program was not funded by Mata. It was funded by the advertising agents that advertised on those bus shelters. There's also, there was also a program that used those benches as advertising. And so, when that program ended, those benches were still there. There are, right now, I know, three on Austin P. in District One, and one on Yale that are half-broken. It really is a liability. and one on Yale that are half-broken. It really is a liability. I'm not sure if we still own them. I'm not sure if, once that advertising agent, agent, that advertising program ended, who owned them or what happened to them. All of them were not discarded, so I really would like for someone to take a look at that and discard them if that was a part of that program, or fix them. Fixing them would be, you know, good. It wouldn't, shouldn't take a lot. Or if we could start that advertising program back to where we have area companies or local businesses that want to sponsor shelters for their advertising. And I know, you know, with technology, that may not be as lucrative, but it will provide a great service to the constituents and some revenue for you all as well. Can really kind of think about that. Maybe the board can come together and think about how we can revamp that program and put at least a bench at everyone and let local businesses have that advertising free if they maintain it or something like that, or let them get advertising dollars and maintain it and that kind of thing. So let me know when you come back, if you could speak to that now if you want to, but if you all could go and think of ways in which you can re-implement that, it would give you some extra dollars and the constituents some relief in those areas.
Thank you, Council.
Excuse me, or churches, the nonprofits in the area. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Eric Stevens, Chief Administrative Officer from MADA. I think what you're referring to is a program that was primarily run by the Memphis Union Mission, I think it was called.
Those were the benches, not the big brown metal shelters.
Yes, ma'am. The benches, yes, ma'am. And I think one of the challenges with that was MADA historically didn't have control of them, and also they didn't always sync up with the actual bus stops within our system. So there's geo-tracking to position where, to measure our on-time performance. And so as well as the stops that are in our system and the stops that were erected by other entities, there's a discrepancy there. We've got over twenty-five-hundred stops across the city, across our network. So it's, it is a challenge to sync all those pieces up, but I think what you're referring to is, are those benches that were erected by other entities. The problem is that we don't have control over them, and then oftentimes, and so the maintenance of them is not maintained by those programs because their legacy or they didn't build in an evergreen mechanism to do that. So fair point. We'll also look at advertising on our actual own stops, and so that's a possibility, but I do understand what you're saying, but also I think it's key to recognize that some of those are outside of the control of MADA. They were erected by other entities.
I'm not sure who erected them, but I know some of them were connected. And for the ones that were somehow, I don't know if they were related, even if they erected them, but they were used by the people at the bus stop, they were near the bus stop or something like that. Once that program ended, and I'm just wanting the information, were those included? Were they responsible for tearing them down or maintaining them? If not, even if you can, if you have a list of those that you say were not in your program but were used, or who do we need to contact about those? Because some of them don't have a name on it. They're just raggedy benches, wood benches that are, you know, in disarray and really not safe. So I'm not sure if they were a part of that advertising program or not.
Those were not MADA. Those were not MADA benches, so we don't have any.
Now, how do you know that?
Because when I first got to MADA, that's one of the first questions I asked is, what, because there was a discrepancy between people being passed up, and so I had to ask the question, why are they being passed up? And what I learned from the operators was, is they weren't official stops. So oftentimes, they'd be close but not super close, and so there would be a discrepancy with being passed up.
So it was just random people building benches along Memphis City streets that were not MADA benches, and they're not the city's benches, but people riding a bus used to sit there and get passed up by the bus, and you investigated and found out, no, those are not our benches. Whose were they when you found out?
That's what I was referring to, the Memphis Union Mission, I believe the entity was, years ago. So for example, an example would be if there is an erected MADA sign, like a green post sign, and then a couple feet away, there may be a bench or something like that. I know, I've seen it across the city. I've gone to some of the stops. They're not, they're not connected. I think the thought process was, not being there, this was years ago, not being there at the time, the thought process was to provide something for people to sit on at some of those stops. However, there was not coordination, and if there was coordination many years ago, there was no continuity between then and now to make sure that they were maintained. So yes, that's why they're decrepit at this point.
I guess they saw the opportunity to, if this was the case, and I do want to ask Chief about that, if this was the case, they saw the opportunity in putting a bench by a bus stop and advertising on it was a way to spend their advertising dollars. That's what you may want to consider as well, because it killed two birds with one stone. But Chief, if there are benches in this, throughout the city that were erected by somebody, but now they're all ragged and torn and MADA says they don't have anything to do with them, what do we need, what do we do? Because they, there are some in my district that look a high miss.
Okay. Antonio Adams, Chief Operating Officer, City of Memphis. You know, Mr. Stevens, Stevens may be, may be appropriate and correct when he mentioned that there was just an opportunity for someone to provide some seating opportunity. So what we need to do is get inventory, and then we should collect those, because those are erected in the right way, and so we need to move those out of the way. And then if there is an opportunity that MADA can then provide the shelter and/or seating capacity, then they can do so as well. All right.
If they're in our districts and, because there's no name, they're, everything is faded off of them and half there, I don't, I'm like, please don't sit there. But do we need to give you the address and you all can, okay?
Yes, ma'am. If you can forward that to me in the Public Works Division, and then we can work to get those removed out of the right way. Yes, ma'am.
I got two questions, and we're gonna end, because we're gonna be, going back to the electric buses. You say you got one running, two sitting. You got one running, so you got to have people that can operate that. Why can't they operate the other two?
What? We don't have the technical expertise on staff, so what ends up happening is every time a gillig, the manufacturer, comes around on their normal, they end up doing the work on the vehicles to get, to try and get the vehicles up to speed. Now, what has happened on the two that are out, they're just beyond the capability of the regional rep to do, so we'll have to send those vehicles back to the manufacturer to get work done.
Yeah, because if they're not used, yeah, send them back. You mean, get our money back on?
We can, but the, whatever the sale price is, we owe the FDA eighty percent.
Okay. All right, we need to get somebody to deal with those two buses. Okay. Not the other question. Louisville and Memphis, there's about a thirty thousand population difference. What are they doing that we're not doing? For them to be able to give us buses?
Everything that's in that.
And they got brand-new buses.
Everything that's in that Pricewaterhouse report. That is, that in a nutshell is that MADA, if I'm saying it correctly now, has very hard-working staff. The failure was that leadership, period.
Leadership. Okay, good enough. Councilman Warren, you're next.
On those electric buses, I bought like a leaf for my wife twelve years ago, and it never goes in to be worked on. They don't have any parts. I mean, what are we doing? Are we having them worked on because they've been hit in accidents? Is that the problem? Because, you know, these electric vehicles don't have many moving parts in them. They tend not to break down, so what have we done to our electric vehicles?
They're more complicated from a bus standpoint. I don't have the report. Let me get you a report on what exactly is wrong with them, and I will get that information to you.
Because I'm wondering, did we do something wrong to them?
It could be, it could be as simple as charging them incorrectly, but let me get the exact, what is keeping them down.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir.
And this committee is adjourned.
Second.
All right. It has been moved by Councilman Edmund Ford Senior and seconded by Councilman Dr. Warren. If you will please let us know your name and address for the record, and you may proceed.
Good afternoon. Nichols Water Division of Planning and Development, 125 North Main. This is a request to abandon a public alley near the intersection of South Third and Elm. So here you can see where we're at in the city. We're sort of on the south side of Crump there. The right of way is a portion of the alley which bisects the block between South Third and Elm. This will be a better map on the next slide. So here in pink, you see the alley in question they're requesting to close. And just to give you a little more sense of where we're at in the city, this building here is Gaston Community Center. The alley is twelve feet in width, and the portion they're requesting to close is four hundred feet total in length. To give you a sense of, you know, sort of the state of the alley, the northern portion has been illegally fenced since at least 2019. You can see here this picture from Google Street View, which is dated in March 2019. Of course, that's the alley there highlighted. Both DPD staff and the Land Use Control Board did recommend approval with conditions on this. The major findings being that, one, closing the alley won't impair the accessibility of the nearby properties in the immediate future. Of course, you can see it was fenced, so of course wasn't being used. Also, we find that closing the alley won't make development.
Also, we find that closing the alley won't make development of the nearby properties less likely in the long-term future. Also, we find that closing the alley won't make development of the nearby properties less likely in the long-term future. Also, we find that closing the alley won't make development of the nearby properties less likely in the long-term future. And so we're recommending approval with conditions. And so we're recommending approval with conditions. And so we're recommending approval with conditions. Here's some photos of the site, so this is the southern portions, if you're on Elm looking south, that's the alley there. Here's some photos of the site, so this is the southern portions, if you're on Elm looking south, that's the alley there. Here's some photos of the site, so this is the southern portions, if you're on Elm looking south, that's the alley there. There do appear to be some power lines in the alley, they'll have to report an easement for that or move them. There do appear to be some power lines in the alley, they'll have to report an easement for that or move them. There do appear to be some power lines in the alley, they'll have to report an easement for that or move them. And then here's the northern portion of the alley, which I've already shown, highlighted there. And then here's the northern portion of the alley, which I've already shown, highlighted there. And then here's the northern portion of the alley, which I've already shown, highlighted there. So again, we're recommending approval with three conditions. So again, we're recommending approval with three conditions. So again, we're recommending approval with three conditions. These are boilerplate conditions, the main thing being comply with them within three years, so complete the closure within three years. These are boilerplate conditions, the main thing being comply with them within three years, so complete the closure within three years. These are boilerplate conditions, the main thing being comply with them within three years, so complete the closure within three years. And with that, I'm available for questions. And with that, I'm available for questions. And with that, I'm available for questions.
All right, we do know that there was no opposition and no one spoke against it at all. All right, we do know that there was no opposition and no one spoke against it at all. All right, we do know that there was no opposition and no one spoke against it at all. Well, I guess that's what "no opposition" means. Well, I guess that's what "no opposition" means. Well, I guess that's what "no opposition" means. Dr. Warren, you're recognized. Dr. Warren, you're recognized. Dr. Warren, you're recognized.
Why do they want to close it? Why do they want to close it? Why do they want to close it? And what are they going to do with it? And what are they going to do with it? And what are they going to do with it?
I'll let Ms. Reeves on behalf of the applicant answer that one. I'll let Ms. Reeves on behalf of the applicant answer that one. I'll let Ms. Reeves on behalf of the applicant answer that one.
Cindy Reeves, S.R. Consulting, 5909 Shelby Oaks Drive, Suite 200. Cindy Reeves, S.R. Consulting, 5909 Shelby Oaks Drive, Suite 200. Cindy Reeves, S.R. Consulting, 5909 Shelby Oaks Drive, Suite 200. They're going to close it and half of the land will go to one property, the adjacent property owner to the east They're going to close it and half of the land will go to one property, the adjacent property owner to the east They're going to close it and half of the land will go to one property, the adjacent property owner to the east and half will go to the adjacent property owner to the west. and half will go to the adjacent property owner to the west. and half will go to the adjacent property owner to the west. It's not, it's an alley that's never been improved or maintained by the city, It's not, it's an alley that's never been improved or maintained by the city, It's not, it's an alley that's never been improved or maintained by the city, and it just made more sense to go ahead, close the alley so that both parties could secure their properties with proper fencing. and it just made more sense to go ahead, close the alley so that both parties could secure their properties with proper fencing. and it just made more sense to go ahead, close the alley so that both parties could secure their properties with proper fencing.
So that way they can put fencing in and make their properties more secure from burglary and things like that? So that way they can put fencing in and make their properties more secure from burglary and things like that? So that way they can put fencing in and make their properties more secure from burglary and things like that?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Is that what they're looking at? Is that what they're looking at? Is that what they're looking at?
That is. That is. That is.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Edmund Ford Senior. Thank you, Councilman Edmund Ford Senior. Thank you, Councilman Edmund Ford Senior.
Universal scaffolding and Pyramid Auto. Universal scaffolding and Pyramid Auto. Universal scaffolding and Pyramid Auto.
I have no problem with this, but you tell the scaffolding people, "Tell the Lord," okay? I have no problem with this, but you tell the scaffolding people, "Tell the Lord," okay? I have no problem with this, but you tell the scaffolding people, "Tell the Lord," okay? It's a eyesore. It's an eyesore. It's an eyesore. And Pyramid, I have no problem with them, just tell them, "Hey, keep their landscape and everything else," okay? And Pyramid, I have no problem with them, just tell them, "Hey, keep their landscape and everything else," okay? And Pyramid, I have no problem with them, just tell them, "Hey, keep their landscape and everything else," okay? Because downtown has come across Crump Boulevard, okay? Because downtown has come across Crump Boulevard, okay? Because downtown has come across Crump Boulevard, okay? So we want things to start looking a little bit better over there. So we want things to start looking a little bit better over there. So we want things to start looking a little bit better over there. But the scaffolding place, they're really an eyesore. But the scaffolding place, they're really an eyesore. But the scaffolding place, they're really an eyesore. It's a disgrace to, we got Gaston Community and everything, yes, it's not a good thing, okay? It's a disgrace to, we got Gaston Community and everything, yes, it's not a good thing, okay? It's a disgrace to, we got Gaston Community and everything, yes, it's not a good thing, okay? City of Memphis is across the street from there, okay? City of Memphis is across the street from there, okay? City of Memphis is across the street from there, okay? Yep, but I've been complaining about them, okay? Yep, but I've been complaining about them, okay? Yep, but I've been complaining about them, okay?
I will let them know. I will let them know. I will let them know.
Yeah, because you know, it's so high, you know, I don't want it to fall on somebody if a wind come by and somebody's walking. Yeah, because you know, it's so high, you know, I don't want it to fall on somebody if a wind come by and somebody's walking. Yeah, because you know, it's so high, you know, I don't want it to fall on somebody if a wind come by and somebody's walking. A lot of people don't know where that scaffolding place used to be Hogan Night Grocery Store. A lot of people don't know where that scaffolding place used to be Hogan Night Grocery Store. A lot of people don't know where that scaffolding place used to be Hogan Night Grocery Store. Y'all young folk don't know nothing about Hogan Night. Y'all young folk don't know nothing about Hogan Night. Y'all young folk don't know nothing about Hogan Night. Hogan Night used to be one of your big grocery stores in the city of Memphis, years and years ago, yeah. Hogan Night used to be one of your big grocery stores in the city of Memphis, years and years ago, yeah. Hogan Night used to be one of your big grocery stores in the city of Memphis, years and years ago, yeah. You know, y'all only know about Saver Light and Croak. You know, y'all only know about Saver Light and Croak. You know, y'all only know about Saver Light and Croak. But no, that's an eyesore. But no, that's an eyesore. But no, that's an eyesore.
I will let them know. I will let them know. I will let them know.
Okay, they started out all right, but hey, they've gotten kind of ridiculous, okay? Okay, they started out all right, but hey, they've gotten kind of ridiculous, okay? Okay, they started out all right, but hey, they've gotten kind of ridiculous, okay?
I'll let them know. I'll let them know. I'll let them know.
Yeah, so, yeah, other than that, I'm good, but they need to do that before we close this alley. Yeah, so, yeah, other than that, I'm good, but they need to do that before we close this alley. Yeah, so, yeah, other than that, I'm good, but they need to do that before we close this alley.
And, yes, sir, and before it is quit claiming, they will be here on the 19th, and I will let you. And, yes, sir, and before it is quit claiming, they will be here on the 19th, and I will let you. And, yes, sir, and before it is quit claiming, they will be here on the 19th, and I will let you.
Good enough, but that's the first thing that they need to do over there on 3rd Street, okay? Good enough, but that's the first thing that they need to do over there on 3rd Street, okay? Good enough, but that's the first thing that they need to do over there on 3rd Street, okay?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Councilman. With all that being said, those in favor, please say aye. With all that being said, those in favor, please say aye. With all that being said, those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any opposed? Any opposed? It is the opinion of the chair that the ayes have it. It is the opinion of the chair that the ayes have it. It is the opinion of the chair that the ayes have it. Item Number 2 is a resolution approving an honorary street name change of Berry Hill Road Item Number 2 is a resolution approving an honorary street name change of Berry Hill Road Item Number 2 is a resolution approving an honorary street name change of Berry Hill Road from Chimney Rock Boulevard to the city limit for Mr. Adrian Macklin, the award Grammy. from Chimney Rock Boulevard to the city limit for Mr. Adrian Macklin, the award Grammy. from Chimney Rock Boulevard to the city limit for Mr. Adrian Macklin, the award Grammy.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Absolutely.
Producer, writer. Producer, writer. Producer, writer. Okay, Super District 1, District 9, sponsored by Councilwoman Logan, request for same night minutes. Okay, Super District 1, District 9, sponsored by Councilwoman Logan, request for same night minutes. Okay, Super District 1, District 9, sponsored by Councilwoman Logan, request for same night minutes. Can I get a motion and a second? Can I get a motion and a second? Can I get a motion and a second?
Second. Second. Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Ford Senior, seconded by Councilman Dr. Warren. It's been moved by Councilman Ford Senior, seconded by Councilman Dr. Warren. It's been moved by Councilman Ford Senior, seconded by Councilman Dr. Warren. Although, Councilwoman Logan, you are recognized at this time. Although, Councilwoman Logan, you are recognized at this time. Although, Councilwoman Logan, you are recognized at this time.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair. Colleagues, this is a gentleman, young man, that we have recognized previously. Colleagues, this is a gentleman, young man, that we have recognized previously. Colleagues, this is a gentleman, young man, that we have recognized previously. He's the music director at Cordova High School and has done an exceptional job. He's the music director at Cordova High School and has done an exceptional job. He's the music director at Cordova High School and has done an exceptional job. He has really been to those young people, even in some cases more than just a teacher. He has really been to those young people, even in some cases more than just a teacher. He has really been to those young people, even in some cases more than just a teacher. He goes above and beyond, and I am thrilled to be able to recognize him. He goes above and beyond, and I am thrilled to be able to recognize him. He goes above and beyond, and I am thrilled to be able to recognize him. We were asked to honor him with this street change, name change, honorary name change in front of the school, We were asked to honor him with this street change, honorary name change in front of the school, We were asked to honor him with this street change, honorary name change in front of the school, and I think that is so befitting and so deserving, and so I hope you all join as well as co-sponsor. and I think that is so befitting and so deserving, and so I hope you all join as well as co-sponsor. and I think that is so befitting and so deserving, and so I hope you all join as well as co-sponsor. I guess it would be from everybody if they want to. I guess it would be from everybody if they want to. I guess it would be from everybody if they want to. But, so, with that, I... But, so, with that, I... But, so, with that, I...
Is there anyone present who would like to be a co-sponsor? Is there anyone present who would like to be a co-sponsor? Is there anyone present who would like to be a co-sponsor? Okay, please add every one. Okay, please add every one. Okay, please add every one. All those in favor, say aye. All those in favor, say aye. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Any opposed, say nay. Any opposed, say nay. It is the opinion of the chair that the ayes have it. It is the opinion of the chair that the ayes have it. It is the opinion of the chair that the ayes have it. Does any member of the committee have anything else that needs to be addressed? Does any member of the committee have anything else that needs to be addressed? Does any member of the committee have anything else that needs to be addressed? If not, we are adjourned. If not, we are adjourned. If not, we are adjourned.